Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the March meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. It's good to have you with us tonight. I'm trying to think we have a, a pretty full agenda and we hope you'll enjoy the discussion we have around the topics that are important to the town and certainly our future. With that, we'll have a roll call of members, council members, if I can. There we go, get my screen squared away. Mr. Smitherman.
Evening.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Dr. Sadler.
Here.
Ms. Hunt.
Happy Thursday.
Happy Thursday, Ms. Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Forget to unmute, I'm here.
Good. That is our contingent of council members. We also have with us our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker. We have our town attorney, Ms. Bo House. We have our community policing sergeant, Sergeant PJ Stringer. We have our planner, Stacy Talbert. We have our town manager, Hank Perkins. We have our town public works director, Ryan Moser. And we have our, last but not least, the person who controls the money, our finance director, Pam Orell. Very good folks. Bo, if you would be so kind to go ahead and lead us in our invocation for this evening.
The honor to do it, let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful, beautiful day today. We thank you for the hint of spring that it gives us. We thank you for this wonderful town that we all have the pleasure to live in. We thank you for all of those who serve in this town, the first, first responders. We thank you for the staff of this town. We thank you for the elected body that serves us. And we also give you thanks for the citizens of the town of Lewisville. Now we ask that this meeting be guided by you, that we undertake it with wisdom and courage during all that goes on. And that we lead in the way that you would have us to lead, be with us as we depart, even though we may not be leaving physically, but only virtually. And be with us in the coming days and weeks and also be with those who are in need during this time, whether it's in need of your comfort or your healing. Or it's in physical need of clothing and food or shelter. We ask all these things in your holy name, amen.
Thank you, Bo. Mr. Franklin, since you were preempted last time by our scouts for leading our pledge allegiance, how would you like to do that this evening?
I can do that. This year. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. Of the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. With liberty. And justice for all.
For all. Very good, thank you, Mr. Franklin. Council members, as far as I know, we've only had one change on the agenda and that comes under our introductions and presentations. We did add our public safety report that wasn't on our initial agenda. We've added that is presentations three A I one. Ms. Walker, have there been any additions?
Not for me.
Ms. Ms. Foster.
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask to add, the group to add, for the good of the order of thirteen B two little I, after Dog Park, basically. The item would be request for council work session. It's less of a discussion and more of a forecast request, shouldn't take long.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. With that, council members, there are no other changes, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. Mr. Smitherman makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion, all those in favor, please say, Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin. Who did I miss? Jane, Ms. Welch, did I get you?
You got me.
Okay, very good, mayor's eye, that is unanimous for the approval of the agenda this evening. Hank, would you like to walk us through our consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Okay, this evening's consent agenda, it's like eight items. We have resolution two zero two one zero one four, accepting an approval of monthly financials for the seven months ending January thirty first, twenty twenty one. The approval of town council briefing minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty one. Approval of town council retreat minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty one. Approval of town council meeting minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty one. Resolution two zero two one zero one five, accepting the resignation of Bill Scantlin from the Lewisville Planning Board. Resolution two zero two one zero one six, accepting the resignation of Susan Stevens from the Lewisville Zoning Board of Adjustment. Resolution two zero two one zero one seven, accepting the resignation of Catherine Spross. From the Lewisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Development Board. And finally, resolution two zero two one zero one eight, accepting the resignation of Daniel Frye from the Lewisville Utilities Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, our consent agenda are routine items that come before the council. Any member of the council can ask that these, a singular item be pulled off and discussed individually, or we generally try to go ahead and approve them as a group. Council members, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin. Mayor's eye, that's unanimous, thank you very much. PJ, what do you have for us tonight?
Good afternoon, everybody, hope you're, everybody's doing well. Hank, if you'll pull up the spreadsheet. So I think last month, we had actually, some of the council members had actually requested about a comparison. So we're finally getting into some of those, some of that data from last year. For February, we had five hundred and sixteen total calls for service, two hundred and sixty six security checks. Last year at this time, we were at two oh one, so that, that number did increase. It's down a little bit from last month and that can all depend on from days, how many days of bad weather that we had, if, if we had any ice or, or rain where the deputies couldn't be mobile. And how many days are actually in the month? And we had thirty nine traffic arrests compared to seventy one last year at this time. Sixteen alarms compared to forty four. And then still that response time at like four point seven. And I think the calls for service, all the stats were emailed, are going to be emailed to the council members showing the graphs in a little more detail. I'm not sure if y'all actually all received those yet or not. They should have been a forwarded email from probably Hank. And if the calls for service, we actually have it pulled up if, if anybody has any questions about any of that.
PJ, there seems to be a comparatively big jump between January twenty twenty and January twenty twenty one. Is that, that's got to be somewhat of an aberration data, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it is. The, these stats will fluctuate, especially for your, for your security checks. Because let's just say that we, a deputy takes off a week of vacation. So those, those numbers are not going to be compiled or anything like that. Or even staffing issues for zone cars that are actually outside the town. So some of those are actually compared and computed in the, in that data. Also, if you got just a second, I wanted to, as a reminder, with some of those issues that neighboring counties have had, we've had a lot of teenagers. That have corresponded with people online. And I think Ms. Hunt had made mention to maybe just remind some folks about some of the do's and don'ts when you're, when your kids are doing online, online work. So just a few of those safety tips. I encourage the parents to be mindful and, and check behind your kids on their computers. The, the school system only has certain platforms that are in place to monitor these, this online activity. So ultimately, it's the parent's responsibility to check behind their kids and make sure that they're not communicating or using these computers only for schoolwork or not compute, communicating with somebody. Because these predators, folks, they're, they're, they're very slick. They know how to, they know how to talk and lure your kids and make everything look good. And once we get to that level and they're taken, you know, some of the outcomes are not so good. So I just want to encourage parents to, to be nosy, that's our job as, as parents, to be nosy and check behind our kids. And make sure that, that they're using these computers online like they're supposed to be.
Council members, any questions for PJ? Sergeant Stringer, thank you very much.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
Y'all stay safe out there, thanks for all you're doing.
Take care.
Very good. Our next item on the agenda is, I'm one of the reasons Lewisville is a great place to live and don't try to figure out the acronym for that because you'll never get it. But Ms. Welch, would you like to handle this next item for us?
Yes, what a pleasure and a joy to have nominated Rita Smith. And the reason I've nominated her is because Rita, for over fifteen years, has been coordinating and in charge of the food pantry. That is mainly at the Lewisville Methodist Church, as far as where the food is, but the churches take turns with the distribution. And I hope she is on a call now, Hank, is she?
I was going to ask, if Ms. Smith is in the attendees, I can promote her in or allow her to speak, whatever.
That would be great.
Okay.
I know she's there, Hank, I'm not sure what number or whether she's coming in on a computer, she called just before the meeting started.
So Rita, if you're on a phone, you've just unmuted yourself, there we go.
Yeah, welcome Rita. Rita, if you would, would you explain a little bit about how the pantry works and what people are served, et cetera? And thank you for such dedication to the town and your community and, and with the pandemic, what a service, so if you would, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to say that it's, that I'm not the only one that works the pantry, but I really appreciate the recognition that you have given me. The pantry is for the Lewisville residents. We collect food and money and we're able to help people that are in need of those assistance with lights and rent and of course, food. We have different churches helping with this. And each church has a representative that takes a month out of the year to distribute the food. But since the pandemic, I've been opening the pantry on Thursdays, a Thursday that I choose. And we distribute to the people that come by, they'll have a list of food and they'll check off the list and we fill the bags and we take it to their car and then send them on their way. As far as helping people with rent or lights, people will call the church and they'll get in touch with me and I'll interview the people and do what I can for them. And that's basically it. Do I have any questions? Do you have any questions for me?
Rita, basically it is, is quite a bit, so. We're real proud of you, you, you join a number of distinguished Lewisville residents who, residents who have made significant contributions to our community and keeping it the great place to live. So thank you for all you do and thank you, Ms. Welch, for that nomination.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Very good, council members, the second item, or the next item on our agenda is a proclamation. And I'll read this if I can for you, or I, I will read it. This is the town of Lewisville, it is proclaiming Mary Alice Warren Day. Whereas the town of Lewisville wishes to recognize its senior citizens and the important role they serve in our society. And whereas Mrs. Warren was born on March seventeenth, nineteen twenty one. And whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community, which benefits from the knowledge, creativity and experience this individual brings to all. And during a long, productive lifetime, Mrs. Warren has demonstrated her dedication to the welfare of others in countless ways and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages. And whereas Mrs. Warren has established as her legacy by her significant contributions to the town through the donation of land for Jack Warren Park and the new Mary Alice Warren Community Center, that will greatly enhance the lives of Lewisville residents for generations to come. And whereas Mrs. Warren has experienced the most eventful century of this world's history. Now therefore be resolved, I, Mike Horn, in the Lewisville Town Council, do hereby proclaim March seventeenth nineteen, or twenty twenty one as Mary Alice Warren Day. In the town of Lewisville, ask the citizens of Lewisville to recognize and acknowledge the one hundredth birthday of Mrs., of Mrs. Warren and the day of this occasion. Council members, may we have a motion to approve? Mr. Smitherman makes the motion, Ms.
Everybody, everybody makes the second.
Everybody's going to make the second, very good, is there any discussion?
Yes, mayor, you know, with this great event, is there, would it be possible to tell the public where she is if they want to send congratulatory cards, et cetera?
That's a good question, Jane. I, I don't know if there, I don't know if there is a security issue involved in that.
Mike, 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 may, may I suggest that if anybody wants to do that, send it to the postal, send it to town hall and let us arrange for delivery?
And we can do that, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Franklin. So Ms. Welch, Mr. Franklin, if somebody at your suggestion, if anybody would like to drop off a card or send a card, we will make sure it gets into Mrs. Warren's hands by next Wednesday, the seventeenth, also St. Patrick's Day.
There you go.
Very good, folks.
Thank you for that, Mike.
Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor's eye as well, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mary Alice, and we will present this to you on March seventeenth, your birthday, in person, which we have an opportunity to do. As we advance through some of the safety precautions that we can now, not necessarily hug you, but we can certainly make sure we put something in your hands that recognizes how important you are to our community. Second item on our proclamation list, and I'll try to work through this one pretty quickly, it's somewhat lengthy. This is proclamation two oh two one oh oh two, proclamation for, proclamation proclaiming, what else does proclamations do? A proclamation for March twenty twenty one, as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month. Whereas the twenty twenty one observance of the March of Meals Month celebrates nineteen years of providing the opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by noting, donating, volunteering and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and in-home delivered, in Forsyth County, has served our community admirably, providing nutritious meals to seniors to help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalizations. That's the longest, most syllable word I've used in a long time, institutionalizations. And whereas Miss Meals on Wheels volunteers are the backbone of the program by not only delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also providing caring concern and attention to their welfare and a powerful socialization opportunity to help combat loneliness and isolationism. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Forsyth County deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to our community. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lewisville Town Council hereby proclaims March two thousand and nineteen as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month and urges every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them. Council members will entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Mrs. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor is I and that's unanimous. And again, our thanks go to Meals on Wheels and particularly a number of folks that we know here in Lewisville who do delivery of meals, thank you for all you do.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, a question for you or our manager, since we've talked about Ms. Ms. Smith and what she does for the community as well as this proclamation. Is it possible, especially given these times, to communicate to the public either through our newsletter or website or Channel Six, all the mechanisms by which folks could contribute? Whether it's through the blessings boxes and having a directory of that or an indication of what the, what the churches are doing. I, I just, I'm wondering if we can operationalize that in a way that's consistent with town policy.
We can look into it and see what we can put together.
Yeah, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now to the first public forum this evening. And Stacy or Hank, if you'll pop up how to either call in or enter the website. There we go. Telephone number, six four six five five eight fifty eighty six fifty six. Or if you'll go to lewisvillenc.net and scroll down and click on events, tonight's town council meeting, there'll be a link to our Zoom website and we can bring you in that way as well. This is the first opportunity this evening for those of you listening or attending who wish to take a moment, share your thoughts and concerns with the town council. This is our opportunity to listen to you and hear what's on your mind. Hank, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, we have lots of people, but we need for them to indicate that they desire to speak by raising their hand.
So if you're on the phone, what is that star?
Stacy, is that star nine?
I think it's star nine.
Star nine, if you wish to, well, Mr. Franklin has the star six up.
I think star six is how you unmute yourself.
Okay, so if you wish to speak and you're on a phone, hit star nine. And then you can hit star six to unmute yourself. Otherwise, if you're on Zoom, there's a little hand that, that's down at the bottom of your screen that you can click on, indicating you wish to speak. What do we have, Mr. Manager?
No hands.
No hands. We'll give it just another second because these times are challenging and we'll show you how challenging they are.
We do have.
When we go to use the chat device.
We do have a hand up, it's Blaine, that's only name I have, no last name.
Very good, Blaine, if you'll give us your first and last name and your address.
All right, I'm going to allow him to talk, there we go. Blaine, go ahead, you'll need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, well, hello again. Blaine Brenton, Conrad Sawmill Road, Hawthorne. I spoke at the February eleventh meeting and one of the things I'd like to see is, I'd like to hear is, is there any status of the city actions since the February eleventh meeting as far as taking care of ordinances or whatever for the junkyard there at the corner of Conrad Sawmill and Robin Hood. Second, do I go through my three minutes first and then you'll respond or?
Well, sure, go, go ahead and take a chunk of your three minutes, that's, that'd be fine.
Okay, so that's one item, I'd like to have a start, a status. I don't know if you've seen the, the Lewisville Community Watch site, but there's some people on there with both positive and negative comments about the junkyard. And it seems to be a few people that think if you own property in Lewisville or if you rent property in Lewisville, that you have the right to do whatever you want with the property. You could build a junkyard, you could have a pig farm, whatever you want to do, it's okay. I just would like to maybe have the mayor or the town attorney to comment on that. The, well, my next item is, you know, about the ordinances for the city. I looked up a few last year and I, I saw that there was like a, if you have a junkyard, there's eight foot fencing supposed to be placed around the junkyard. Supposed to be a thousand foot set that from any state road. And all, all the vehicles on the property are to be tagged or in a garage. There, there's, we still have vehicles on the Conrad Sawmill Road on easement that are lined up actually facing the wrong way. In the evening, when it comes in, the light shine south down the road, anybody traveling north will be blinded by the headlights. And also, they're now parking on Robin Hood Road on easement. And this person, his, his biggest thing is getting his junk is on the bulk pickups. Obviously, we haven't had it for the past year, but they'll be starting up again in April, so that means junk's going to be piling up again. So that's basically all I have.
Thank you again, this is, let me, let me just say, and Hank, if you want to add anything to this, you can, but this is our opportunity to listen to your concerns and we, please understand that we heard you last week. And we are engaged in a variety of activities and I don't want to enumerate them right now, but we're engaged in a variety of activities to try to deal with your concerns and the concerns of your neighborhood. As I believe I've mentioned to you before, sometimes working through these things takes a little time because we have to operate within the law, operate within the ordinances. It gives us the prerogative to deal with the things that you're talking about. And sometimes it takes the town just a little while to do that, to make sure that we're on legal footing when we take action. I believe if you would like to contact the manager, I believe he can have some very specific things for you. But let me also say that we are reviewing all of our ordinances as regards to nuisance and junk cars and abandoned cars and junkyards. And we will be looking at those closely in the, in the near future, as we're in the process of doing it, to see if we can't strengthen those and give us a little more teeth in how we deal with the issues that you're describing. So if you would like to, to just touch base with the manager, he can fill you in a lot more detail on types of things we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Hank?
Um, we have a telephone number, three three six six oh seven four five six five, I'm going to allow to speak.
Very good, please state your name and address, please. I think you're going to be star nine to unmute yourself.
Try star six, if that star nine doesn't work. I get them mixed up too, I don't really know which one is which.
Star six or star nine? There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, let me go in here. So my name is April Williamson, I own a home on Conrad Sawmill. And I emailed back on February twelfth about the article that was in the January, February newsletter. And it was talking about how things need to be moved off of the right of way and that one notice would be given at that point, things would be moved. I haven't heard back on that, I just wondered what the status of that is and if that does not apply to us, why does it not apply to us?
Yeah, Ms. Williamson, if we haven't responded to that February twelfth email, we will dive into it and make sure that we do. I wish, this is where I have a great deal of frustration and I think the council members share that frustration, is to, to finally get somebody who has the authority to do something. You're running through the woods, as, as the TV show says, afraid and naked. Because you can't quite get anybody to come forward and say, we'll take responsibility to do that. And PJ, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I'm, I'm being too critical here. The deputies have told us because to state right of way, that it has to be the Department of Transportation who enforces that. And in order for the, in order for the Department of Transportation to enforce it, they have to put up no parking signs. And then once that occurs, then there can be some enforcement done on that. Let me say that we are doing everything we can to see if that will happen. But again, we're going up the food chain and so it just takes us a little while.
Okay, we appreciate that. And another thing, we've heard that some of the residents have been advised to get restraining orders and. a lot of times those don't do any good. So we were just wondering, what is the town doing to keep us safe? Are they doing, you know, increased patrol? What are you doing to make sure that things are okay here?
Yeah, once again, I know, sorry to string your dome, they put words in your mouth, but we have increased our patrols on those streets. Our deputies are making that one of their main thoroughfare, thoroughfares when they go from one side of town to the other. So they are increasing their surveillance. Again, they can't be everywhere all the time. That's why we encourage you, the second that you experience some issue that you think is threatening or some issue that concerns you, please call the non-emergency number. That will get to our deputies and they will respond.
Okay, and what about Star HP? You had mentioned that last time. Has that been effective?
Well, we've got to, unfortunately, we've got to get the Department of Transportation to do what they need to do before HP will enforce.
Okay, so that was in, okay, so we'll just call the non-emergency number if we need them.
Yes, ma'am, and do not delay. Call them for anything because that's why we have community policing.
Okay, well, we appreciate it. Any help you're sending our way, we do appreciate.
Well, just know we share your frustration because it's not like we're not moving as fast as some of us wish that we could move because of the, the way we have to go about this, but we have to go about it in this way to make sure we're not breaking the law or infringing upon somebody's rights.
So, and I'm, you know, I was, when I was looking in the newsletter, I saw where it said, keep Lewisville beautiful, you know, town events that you've had that we've attended, you ask us to pick up our trash, share our things with us. And we would just like that. We pay the taxes. We would just like that extended our way.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And we'll check back on your February twelfth email and make sure if we haven't responded to you, we will.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ask Ms. Williamson to call me so we can do that specific tracking for us tomorrow.
Okay, I will.
Ms. Williamson, if you call me on three, three, six, nine, four, five, one, zero, two, two. And I will get with you and try to get that, find out what happened to that email.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hank, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we have Tina Parker is next.
Very good, Ms. Parker, if you're, please come on, state your name and your address.
Ms. Parker, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey there, thank you. I'm at seventy-seven thirty-two Seasons Hollow Road, so on the private road off of Conrad Sawmill Road. And I just wanted, I'm new to the game. I have been following this a little bit, but I have not been able to make the meetings. But kind of trying to keep up with what you've already done, so I hope I'm not repeating something. We have, we built this home nineteen years ago, but before that we lived in Sedgwick. And we own a medium sized construction company. And one of the reasons why we moved out this way and also have a business now in Winston instead of Lewisville is because of all of our construction equipment. And we have many, many trucks and, you know, skid steers. I don't even know all the things we have. But because of town ordinances, we could not have those things in our, in our home and at our home. And I mean, no one ever really complained, but just due to that. And so it appears to me, you know, because I passed by, you know, six tenths of a mile up Conrad Sawmill from where I am. But I pass by that, the gentleman's place frequently to go to and from. And it appears to me that he must be running some kind of company because a lot of the things he has, besides the junk and have you, is, you know, business type equipment. And so I'm just curious, has anyone addressed that issue with having all the, you know, and it appears that it business type things, like construction type things. And again, speaking from a woman who owns a construction company that does a good bit of work, we're actually doing the work at some work at Jack, the new things that Jack Warner that y'all spoke about earlier. So I understand construction company equipment. I understand dirt, mud, all those things and, and, but I, I don't understand why that, or I'm curious as to whether, has that been addressed? Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Parker, thank you so much for your comments. And again, let me come back to the answer that I can probably provide the most, and that's we are taking a look at our ordinances to be able to enforce those to their full extent. Our town manager and town public works director have reviewed that site. They are, they are going to do whatever they can do. And in the meantime, we're strengthening our ordinances so that we can deal with this in the future. And let me, let me please say to you, thank you for your love and attention that you're putting into the community center. What part are you working on?
We are mid-south construction and irrigation. And so we're, you'd have to ask my husband, he's not home yet, but we are probably doing any kind of irrigation landscape.
Very good.
Outside. So yeah, yes, we're excited.
Please treat, please treat us with a lot of love.
Yeah, we're doing that one. And we're also doing the one behind the, the new doctor's office. So that's, we got to keep, got to get that one rolling again, but we're working on that one behind the pharmacy. So we appreciate the business and we love Lewisville and do, as April said, want to keep it beautiful and hope that y'all will work with us on this issue on Conrad Sawmill Road.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Yeah, thank you.
Hank, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we have Robert.
Okay, Robert, if you'll state your first name and last name and your address.
Hello, this is Robert Stone Street at three, nine, five Dub Road.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me? Okay. Is now the time to talk? I know that the next proposal coming up is related to the annexation and the rezoning of the end of Dub Road.
Yes, sir. Now's the time to do that.
Okay.
Mike, Mike.
Yes, sir.
We have, we have public hearings coming up on those issues.
Let me check here real quick.
Yes, we do.
Mayor, we have a public hearing on the annexation and the rezoning.
That's.
The actual development itself is not a public hearing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well.
Thanks.
I tell you what, Robert, go ahead and, and lay your comment out now. And if you, when we have the public hearing, if you feel that the issue you want to address is still pertinent, you can jump into the public hearing on that.
Okay, yeah, my reason for, for joining the meeting tonight, we're new residents here to Lewisville. And, you know, we've been, we've, we fell in love with this area and especially this road that we, we moved on. It's, it's a dead end road, the way that it's set up currently. And we moved here last June. And, you know, now we find out that one of the neighbors is going to, you know, possibly develop his property. And it sounds like that's going to happen. And I understand how that works. My, my big concern is, is right now our road shortly off the, one of the rotaries there off the highway, and it's a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. And it's, it's a rather narrow road. And we're currently able to walk up and down and enjoy and meet our neighbors here. And how does rezoning it into smaller lots down the end and then putting in, I've hearing up to twenty-eight houses going to directly affect the traffic here running through our home. But also, they're talking about widening the road and maybe coming on to our property or some of our neighbors' properties. And I'm, I'm just looking for more clarification on that. And to find out if there's a way that I can participate or at least, you know, understand how that's going to affect us.
Yes, sir, you can.
Absolutely.
Ms. Talbert, is there a, do we have a map of the proposed development on our website?
No, I don't believe so, but I will be sharing it later tonight.
So if you, if you will stay with us and when we have that public hearing, if you'd like to come in and, and, and participate at that, and then if we don't get your questions answered, you have another opportunity at the very end of this meeting for, for our second public forum.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll, we'll be sharing a lot of information about that tonight.
Thank you all.
Very good. Thank you. Hank, do we have anyone else?
No, sir.
Very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participating. It's always good to hear from our residents. Sometimes we can give you wonderful answers that make you happy and sometimes we, we can't, but no, we've, we're hearing you and we're trying to address your concerns. Ms. Walker, you have our appointments.
Sorry, yes, my phone keeps ringing. Our first set of appointments is for Parks, Recreation and Cultural Development Board. You should, each council member should have the information that I sent to you with the normal voting sheet. But since we're on Zoom, we're going to be using chat. Hopefully everyone received the information that I sent out on how to vote. So the first one that we're going to do is for Parks and Rec. And we're going to use the chat box that's at the very bottom of your screen. And if you will go ahead and per the instructions I sent out earlier, let me know how you will be voting. And you'll have to give me a moment or two because I'm on my personal laptop as opposed to being at work. So I've got to do a little manipulating here to make sure everything works okay.
Mine.
Has everybody been able to find how to get to there?
No, if you wouldn't mind reminding us, Joyce, how you get to the chat. At the very bottom of your screen, there should be a, a little box that looks like a, something from the comic strip. And it says chat, just kind of hover your, hover your. Okay, got it. Mouse. Mm-hmm. And all you have to do is click that. Okay. And once you click that, put in as your title, Parks and Rec or P and R or something like that. And who you are voting for. You're voting for three people.
Make sure it's being directed to Mrs. Walker.
Thank you. Yes, not panelists.
So when you click on chat, you'll have a choice. It'll come up. It'll say everyone. And then if you click on that, there'll be a list and scroll down till you find Mrs. Walker, click on hers. And that way this, your vote will go privately to her. For the public's information, Joyce is probably going to tell you this anyway, she will, the votes are initially a secret ballot, but they will be, they are publicly checked and they will be made available at the, at the appropriate time.
And remember, when you, when you hit return, that's, that's your send. So don't hit return before you're ready to send.
I'm going to.
Yeah.
They don't have the list in front of me. I'm going to need to post that list.
Yeah. Are you able to pull up the packet, Dr. Sadler?
My tablet's acting up on me.
Okay.
I got it.
We put it up on the screen. There we go.
Here.
Yeah, you're going to have to make it a little bit bigger for me.
Or what's even better, pardon me, Hank, what's even better is the, in our town packet, there's the indication of who is already currently serving. That might be a better. Know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we have who's serving and a recommendation for.
Okay, if you can't get to that.
It's in the packet page forty.
Just click on the link where you are right there. Click on the link of the each board. And that, that ballot will come up.
Hank, will you, will you allow me to share?
Well, that's fine like that.
I think we got it.
Okay, good.
I've, I've, I've got, I've got a question to Bo. And, and I guess to Hank and the mayor, is there any way we can do this with a voice vote? I mean, the only reason the secret ballot is for Joyce to tabulate while the meeting continues on and then make an announcement later, as we've been doing this through the years. And then it gets, you know, it's published, if you will, the votes and all. I'm just thinking as far as doing this, I'm going to tell you, if I'm going to have to go to the bottom of the screen and this, that, the other, I'm going to get lost somewhere.
Pardon me if that's the choice, Bo.
This was the, this was the policy that has kind of been adopted, Mr. Franklin. It's not that you, you know, be reined on exactly how it determines how it's going to choose members of boards and committees. And I hate to say it this way is, but it's kind of been this way for a number of years. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, as everybody knows, but it is the way that it has been done. And certainly the, the council could, could determine that they wish to do it by some other mechanism. The hardest part, I think, as you indicated, Mr. Franklin, is the tabulation. If you do it, you know, I guess you, you could call each person for each office and indicate who it is they are voting for. And they could certainly do that. And I, I don't want to speak for the council about what their wishes might be.
Well, well, I, I tell you what, two things here. Let's try the method Ms. Walker recommended to us first for the first one. But if that don't work, let her read out who the candidates are. And then ask pollists of who we're voting for. And she didn't have the opportunity to jot that down. She's going to have to do that anyhow off of chat.
So folks, are we having some success with the chat method?
I've set mine.
I can't see anything because that's still up on the screen.
I'll take this down if everybody's voted.
I've not voted yet.
I haven't either. I don't even know what I'm doing.
Just walk them through the, again, so for Fred, for example, just hitting that chat button.
Yeah, I'll drop it, chat button. I have.
Click on that and then what you'll see is the name of to whom the, that's going to go, defaults to everyone.
All panelists.
And then you just, you scroll down until you find Joyce Walker, click on her name.
All right.
And once you've clicked on her name, the next thing you'll do is enter the names that you're choosing.
All right.
That area.
And also with Parks and Rec, she said.
And put Parks and Rec, put P and R or whatever, so she'll know it.
Are we doing these one at a time or just continuing on?
What we'll do is get the first one done, Mr. Franklin.
All right.
And if it's, if it's not September yet, we'll probably.
I'm trying to catch up here. Give me a second. I just didn't understand it.
And for this one, we're picking three, right?
Correct.
You're picking three. But now, if you can take that down, because I can't see anything that's being done at all, except.
Fred, ready for it to come down?
We'll put it back up for the next group.
Joyce, at the bottom of your screen, if you hover over it, you can click on chat and an individual chat box will come up just for you that you can see.
I've got the chats. That wasn't the problem. The screen was being shared, so I couldn't see anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't see. All right.
All right, I've got, I've got the last names of my choices. Now what do I do?
Hit return.
Let's see.
Where's return?
Your enter box on your keyboard.
Oh, that return. Sorry, I'm looking for it on the little screen there. Damn.
Okay, council members, have we been able to accomplish that? Ms. Smitherman, yes? Thumbs up, Ms. Welch's thumbs up, Ms. Foster's thumbs up, Ms. Hunt?
Just one at a time.
No, I understand that, Mr. Hunt. We're just kind of making sure that everybody had an opportunity to, to go ahead and vote this way. Mr. Franklin, you're there?
I think I'm there.
Dr. Sadler? Thumbs up. Ms. Walker, you should, you should have everybody.
I do, but I, I'm trying to figure out how some people put stuff in. Did some people put in their name and then do things individually with the people that they're voting for instead of all three on one, under one? Because it's, you know what? I hate to say it. Can we go back to what Fred suggested? And just do an individual because of the way people have put it in. I'm not so sure that I can get it all.
I think, I think in this case, we can probably do that. Council, are you fine with that approach? Yes, or do we want to keep it a secret ballot? We're good? Okay, well, here we go. So ladies and gentlemen, if you have not fallen asleep or, or maybe arrived at the conclusion that we're a bunch of technology novices, we'll go through the rule call now for the appointments to the Parks and Recreation and Culture Development Board. So with that, council members, you will name three and you'll just call them off as I call your name. Ms. Walker, are you ready? Ms. Walker, are you ready?
Yes, I said, I'm ready.
Okay, very good, very good. Very, Mr. Smitherman, your choices.
Susan Frye, Jason Jones, Robert Ogden.
Very good. That's Ms. Frye, Mr. Jones and Mr. Ogden. Ms. Welch.
Susan Frye, Wayne Hall, Julie Rutledge. I think she means Robert Ogden.
Robert Ogden, okay. Very good. That's Ms. Frye, that's Mr. Ogden and Ms. Rutledge.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Susan Frye, Robert Ogden, Julie Rutledge.
That's Ms. Frye, Mr. Ogden, and Ms. Rutledge.
That is correct.
Ms. Foster?
Susan Frye, Robert Ogden, Julie Rutledge.
That's Ms. Frye, Mr. Ogden, and Ms. Rutledge.
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Susan Frye, Robert Ogden, Jason Jones.
Very good, that's Mrs. Frye, Mr. Jones, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Hunt, who was your third one?
Robert Ogden.
Robert Ogden, thank you. Dr. Sadler?
Frye, Ogden, Rutledge.
Very good, that's Ms. Frye, Mr. Ogden, and Ms. Rutledge. Okay, the mayor is Ms. Frye, Mr. Ogden, Ms. Rutledge.
Looks like what we have is Ms. Frye, Mr. Ogden, and Ms. Rutledge.
Very good, congratulations, thank you for your willingness to serve, um. Mr. Jones, I hope you don't get discouraged, we want everybody to have an opportunity to participate in our boards and committees, let me remind you, we have a number of committees. That don't have capped membership, where our boards do. So if you wish to contact Ms. Walker or take a look on our website, the various committees that you could participate in. We encourage you to do that, because you are an important voice in the town of Louisville. Ms. Walker, I believe we have planning board next?
Yes, we do, we have three people for planning board, you will be voting for two. Um, you have Terrence Fulton, Charles Gary, and Tom Lawson, who is already a member, but he's asking for reappointment.
Very good, can you make that a little bit bigger, Stace?
It's me.
Or Hank, please?
Yep.
Just a little bit more. Thank you, that's great. Very good, Mr. Smithman?
Tom Lawson, Charles David Gary.
Very good, that's Mr. Lawson and Mr. Gary. Ms. Welch?
Terrence Fulton, Charles Gary.
Very good, that's Mr. Fulton and Mr. Gary. Ms. Foster?
Uh, Mr. Fulton and Lawson.
That's Mr. Fulton and Mr. Lawson. Mr. Franklin?
Hold on, I'm, hold on one second, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was, uh, Ms. Foster.
Yes.
For, uh, Fulton and Lawson, thank you. Okay. I'm ready.
Mr. Franklin?
Okay, uh, Mr. Lawson and Mr. Gary.
That's Mr. Lawson and Mr. Gary.
That's correct.
If any of you guys have ever watched C-SPAN, this is like a, a, a reenactment of C-SPAN when they go through the voting in the House floor. Ms. Hunt?
Sorry, I couldn't figure out my mute thing, um, Terrence Lynn Fulton and Tom Lawson.
Very good, Ms. Hunt, votes are for Mr. Fulton and Mr. Lawson. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Dr. Sadler?
Gary and Lawson.
Dr. Sadler is Mr. Gary and Mr. Lawson. The mayor is Mr. Lawson and Mr. Gary.
It looks like, uh, Tom Lawson is reappointed. And Mr. Gary is the next one, Mr. Gary.
Very good. Mr. Fulton, if you are listening tonight, and I hope you are, uh, again, please, uh, please continue your interest in serving the town. I will say to you that we have an opening on our zoning board of adjustments. If you'd like to be considered with that, please reach out to, um. Ms. Walker and let her know your intentions, and we can take that up at our next meeting. Um, again, thank you all for your interest in your town, we look forward to having you service.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, mayor, is there some way we can take these by acclamation, the next two cents of the will run municipal services? In one, in one vote, I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I was gonna suggest that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you, I'm just trying to speed things along.
Exactly.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have one person to fill one vacancy, and, uh, we have. Mr. Beal for Service District One, and we have Mr. Chris, or Ms. Chris for District Four. If there are no, no objections, we'll appoint those two individuals by unanimous acclamation. I don't hear any objections, thank you. Our next appointment is the zoning board of adjustments, this is a permanent member, three-year term. We have one position open, and Ms. Jennifer Hill has signed up. If there are no objections, we'll appoint Mrs. Hill by unanimous acclamation. Very good. And as the alternate, as I mentioned before, since we appointed Mr. Gary to the planning board. We will have an opening on that, uh, on that, on that, as an alternate on the board of adjustments, so. Again, Mr. Fulton, Ms. Jones, if you wish to, to, to apply for those, please let Ms. Walker know. Thank you, council, that wasn't too immensely painless.
Oh.
Okay. Joyce, I believe you have the next item, this is our public hearing on our annexation request.
Stacy has better maps than I do, or you could either, um. There you go, Stace, can you? There we go. Um, the, and it's very difficult to see, let me see if I can do it, if you, if everyone can see this little area here. Oh, good, thank you, Stace, um, that little area is seven, um, seven acres that's asked to be annexed into the town. That annexation, if approved, will go along with the next item that Stacy will be discovering, uh, discussing. Um, I believe I sent all the information to council. Uh, we've done our due diligence, and we know to whom the property belongs. We're only annexing a portion of the property. And, um. It's up to council to determine whether or not they would like to bring that particular property into the town. Stacy will give you more explanation as this goes forward. But we, um, must have a public hearing on this property before we can do anything else with that development.
Very good, Ms. Walker, what was the gentleman who asked to speak earlier during the public forum on this issue?
That was, um, I just have his first name, Robert, I did not catch his last name.
Stone Street.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Stone Street.
Okay, Mr. Stone Street, it's probably the next item that you want to participate in. Uh, that's when we actually do the rezoning of the property, this is simply to bring it into the town, this property into the town of Louisville. Stacy, you're on.
Okay.
Any, any comments on this before we have, we have our public hearing?
Let's see, a blue line, the blue outline represents.
That's a five hundred foot buffer around the property, um, whenever we have public hearings, we, uh, send notifications to people within five hundred feet of the. Portion of the property to be rezoned, so it's just a, just a, um, to give you an idea of five hundred feet around, um, the border of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council members, any other questions for Stacy or Joyce? With that, we'll open the public hearing on the annexation of this piece of property. Is there anybody that wishes to speak during this public hearing? Hank, do we have anybody raising their hands?
No hands raised yet. Okay, we have one, Luke Dickey.
Okay, Mr. Dickey, if you'll please give us your full name and your address.
Good evening, this is Luke Dickey with Stimmel Associates, uh, it was sound. Address is six oh one North Trade Street, Suite two hundred. Uh, zip code two seven one zero one. Uh, we're petitioners, uh, representing, working with Matt McChesney on this, uh, project, and so obviously we are in favor of the. Uh, annexation and of course the rezoning of this portion of it into the town of Louisville. Um, and is integral parts, and so that we can bring it together, uh, with the remaining portion of the site. Unless, so that we can have everything under one jurisdiction, and also then, uh, underneath one zoning jurisdiction as well. So we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dickey. Anyone else wish to speak? Again, this is just on the annexation of this property, adjoining property that's already in the town of Louisville.
No hands so far.
Very good. With that, we'll close the public hearing, council members, any discussion? Not want to entertain a motion?
Mayor, well, if you recall, we have to wait the twenty-four hour period after a public hearing.
You're right.
The special called meeting is on March the sixteenth, Tuesday at six PM, um, that's when the votes will be held.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Talbert, for that reminder.
Absolutely.
Because we're doing this meeting remotely, uh, we do have to, we do have to wait twenty-four hours. But rather than having a special meeting on this, the petitioner has indicated they can wait until. Now, we're doing this on March sixteenth, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
This is gonna be Monday, is that correct?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday, okay, very good, so we will have a special meeting called to vote on this, this item. On Tuesday, for those of you who would like to come back and hear that vote.
And, and mayor also, uh, folks can send in written comments too.
I'm just getting to that, Mr. Franklin. Very good, and if you, uh, didn't have an opportunity to participate in the public hearing, um, through Zoom or through the phone call. You can send your comments to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. And they'll be included as part of the record. Alrighty, Stacy, this is the rezoning request.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen once more, so you can see, well. Can see that map again. Um, as Joyce mentioned, you can see the portion, um, that is not in gray, that is the portion that is, is. Uh, the petitioner is requesting to be annexed into the town of Louisville. Um, the rest of the property is, that you see that is in gray, is already in the town limits of Louisville, so. This portion already has Louisville zoning, it's zoned RS twenty. Which is residential single family with a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. So the request is, um, whenever we have an annexation, we are required by law to do a rezoning. Uh, within a certain time period in order to accept Louisville zoning, so they fall under our, um, Louisville zoning jurisdiction. And so that they fall under our, um, unified development ordinance instead of the county's unified development ordinance and. Our codes and all those types of things, so this portion, um, as Joyce mentioned, is a little over seven acres. Um, the request is to rezone it from Forsyth County zoning RS forty. Um, which is a residential single family zoning district with a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. Uh, to RS twenty, uh, to match the remainder of the lot, the remainder of the parcel. Um, all under Louisville zoning, again, residential, single family. Um, the twenty stands for a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Uh, the reason we chose to go with RS twenty for the request, um, is so that the entire parcel is contiguous. Um, in the zoning, and it would not be a split zoning district, is, is why we chose to go with RS twenty and not, um, RS forty. So, um, you will be taking into consideration all the uses that are allowed in RS twenty, because this is a, just a general use rezoning due to the annexation. Um, and, but again, it's just this, this one, uh, little portion, um, that is outside of the town limits. Um, to be annexed, to also be, uh, rezoned to Louisville RS twenty zoning.
Very good, any questions for Stacy? If not, we'll open the public hearing, uh, Mr. Stone Street, I believe this is the appropriate time for your comments.
Actually, mayor, it may be the next section during the technical review.
Um, I think.
We have a public comment, but.
Uh, that's right.
We get a lot of people offering advice tonight.
There you go, Robert, go ahead.
Uh, hello, yes, so. My main focus as a resident of Dub Road currently, um, is with this. Proposed rezoning and development, um, I think you can clearly see here that Dub Road passes through. And it becomes very close to Shangri-La Drive, um, is there any intention on making this a, basically a through road at this point, or how do we? How, how would I begin to understand, um, you, just, just the traffic patterns that this development is gonna create? Uh, in what kind of congestion it's gonna create in our neighborhood?
Um. Mr. Stone Street, if you can, if you can, um, public hearings generally are not question and answer sessions. Um, if you could express your concern, that would probably help us be able to respond better.
I thi- I think my biggest concern is that the, the speed limit on this road, the traffic. Appears that it's going to double or triple, uh, with the, the building of this development, the speed limit's going to increase. It's gonna be widened, and it's going to take over a, a portion of our property, and, and as it stands now, our house is one of the closest homes. Um, to the street, we have the least amount of frontage, as a lot of folks here, um, so where would I? Find out this information, and if I did have concerns at a later date, uh, when would be the right time to voice those concerns?
Well, you can certainly contact our planner, Ms. Talbert, and she can walk you through much more specifically and answer your questions. Um, I think tonight is the night when you do need to go ahead and express your concerns about the traffic issue that you just identified.
Uh, I, I'm very concerned about the traffic in, issue, if that's, uh, you know, helps clarify things. Um, that Dub Road now is going to be the main throughway for an additional twenty-eight houses, when currently. There are only roughly fourteen or sixteen houses, so it's, it's really going to double or triple. Uh, I'm concerned, I have two small, uh, three children, but one of them's a small child. Um, and that with the speed limits increased on this road and the traffic going up and down it. It is a big concern to me, originally, when we first heard about this development, um, through the neighbors, that's how I heard about this. Um, it was presented as they were going to be building roughly fourteen houses at the end of the road. Um, and, but now it's, that number has increased to twenty-eight homes possibly is what we're hearing. Um, so it's just, it just seems like it's really gonna impact our way of life, uh, especially with the traffic increase, is Dub Road going to be the only access? Um, is this going to connect to other roads, um, is it going to connect to some of the other subdivisions? Um, that are currently around us, uh, currently Dub Road is not a subdivision lifestyle road. And that's why we chose it, we chose an older neighborhood, um, and with the subdivision at the end of the road, it just, it concerns.
Very good, thank you, we will note that, and I think a couple of your questions are gonna be asked here in just a moment during our technical review of this property.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak, Hank?
No, there are no more hands.
Okay, with that, we'll close our public hearing, council members, any comments? Very good, we will have a vote on this as well on Tuesday, March sixteenth. And that meeting will begin at six o'clock, we will vote on this issue, and we'll also vote on the previous, uh, annexation request. Alrighty, Stacy, you have the next item for us.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen once more. Okay, so tonight before us, we have, um, this, this is a map, it, it shows technically the same thing, but the only difference is that it shows the property. Um, the entire property lies within the Yakon River, um, WS four watershed area, so.
Will you make it just a little bit bigger, please, so we can see where the roads connect and all that?
Yeah. Um, you can see Dab Road. The existing right of way comes to, um, the end, or thi- this red line is, is technically a zoning line, but it's also the end of the corporate limit line. Um, obviously, if this is annexed, that will, that will change, that red line will go around, um, the, the, the outside of this property, but, um. So the right of way of Dab Road does continue to, um, the current, uh, town limit line. So the right of way of dab road does continue to the current town limit line. Up here, we have roller mill drive and. I think that's Roller Ridge, if I'm not mistaken. And Shangri-La are available connections to this property. There are stream and ditch crossings that have to be made for both of those. This property's also, there's a pond on the site and then there's a stream on this side as well. Of crossings that they would have to make in order to connect to any of those three connectivity opportunities. I'll get into that a little bit later, but one of the things they are requesting with. Approval of this development would be a waiver of the connectivity requirements. Due to construction constraints, environmental concerns of having to cross those streams. And those steep slopes and everything. So did my screen change?
Yes, it did.
Okay, let me make sure it. With the PDF it went. So you can see before you.
Stacy, if you can make that a little bigger, please.
Yeah. Trying to get it. Okay. If you can see before you, this, this is the existing dab road that comes through. It is public right of way. It is going to change just a tad. There's some widening that's going to happen through here on the property. They are proposing two cul-de-sacs off of the existing dab road. One thing about this subdivision, it is, it does meet the definition of our large lot subdivision. In the town of Louisville UDO, which means that every lot has to be over 40,000 square feet. And it also has to meet a density requirement of one house per 80,000 square feet. And so it does meet that, both of those requirements in order to be considered. Excuse me. A large lot subdivision. So the lots range everywhere from one acre to eight and a half acres. You can see the, the biggest lot is lot number five. And. That is the existing home place that is to remain. And then there's some other large lots down here along. The Shangri-La side in order for, like, there's a, there's a 3.7 acre parcel, a 5.1 acre parcel. Mainly due to the streams, the topography. So with large lot subdivisions, they do not have to put in sidewalk. Of course, there is no existing sidewalk on dab road. And they are allowed to do ribbon pavement, which would also match the existing pavement on dab road. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be curb and gutter or anything like that. That is allowed in our ordinance whenever you do a large lot subdivision such as this. They are proposing street trees to be. Excuse me, included in this development. And they have also indicated on the site plan. That where feasible, they will be keeping the canopy of trees where, where they can. So usually this particular developer likes to build custom homes on the properties. And so it would be up to those individual lot owners or those builders to remove, remove whatever trees they needed to. In order to build the homes. So it will not be a clear cut. Ordeal for the town. One thing that I would like to talk about is the requirement of dab road. Some of the requirements, if you, if you saw my staff report and, and the resident's concern would be the widening of dab road. There's a portion of dab road right before you get to this property line, right, right through this area. The public right of way is 60 feet, but the roadway is really only about 14 feet in some places. So the minimum requirement for NC DUT, we've had conversations with them, would be 18 feet. And so where needed, the developer would be required to widen dab road to the 18 feet. 18 foot width requirement that would not require any. Any right of way to be acquired. It can be done within the existing right of way. So it's not going to take anybody's property. It will take. A few feet. We're not sure on which side due to. Just, just needing to take a look at the, at the, whenever that is planned. In order to find out which side would be best to widen on, maybe one side in some places and another side in other places. But it will be within the existing public right of way. So it, it would not take anyone's actual property away. It, it would just be in, in the existing right of way that is already dedicated as public right of way. I'm doing my best, trying not to cough, but does anybody have any main questions or any, anything specific that they would like us to? Or like me to hit on or review for this development?
A question, please, Stacy. How many homes again would be built there?
It would be 28 new homes. Two of the homes are existing. So it's, so it's technically a 30 lot development. But two of those homes, you can see the existing lot here. There's, there's a cottage style home on that property. And then down here on lot five, that's the existing home place that will also remain.
Thank you.
Also, I did want to touch on the concern about the speed limit increase. There will be no increase in the speed limit for this property. So this is a town road. So it is a road that our community policing can police for speeders or, or those who are not obeying. Any speed limit signs that are, that are placed out there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Stacy, what's the condition? I think we talked about this a little bit at some point and maybe we didn't. Maybe I thought we did, about the condition of the road itself leading into the neighborhood. I know we did the road condition report from a payment stance. And maybe this is a question for Ryan. But what does that road look like coming up to that point where y'all would widen or the developer would widen the road? Is the, is it pretty good road or?
Ryan, do you want to touch on that or do you want me to or Hank or?
All right, Ryan.
Yeah, we took a look at it. It, it could use some patching right there where it gets, it gets narrow. It's not terrible at all. There's, there's a whole lot more streets that could use paving up in front of this one. But it does, it does have its issues.
With the construction coming through and things like that as they're developing. Is that going to be a concern that it's going to reduce the road? I mean, the condition of that road? As you're talking about patching and things, or how do we handle that?
It definitely, with added, with the added traffic and the construction, it definitely, definitely would need work sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Stacy, all I really need is if you could just tell me a little bit more about what you were describing earlier. You said that in some places, the road is eight, 14 feet would need to be increased to, you said 18. But it's not going to affect individual homes, locations or home.
Right. We, the, the current public right of way through there is 60 feet. And, and you know, right now the road's only 14 feet of that right of way. And so there, there may be trees that have to go that, that, but, but anything that would have to go is. Would, is something that would already currently be inside of the public right of way.
Right. So my question, pardon my interruption, because I know your, your, your throat does not need more talking than needed. But so how will that be determined? That's my question. So when you said eventually we'll, we'll decide which, which side will be. For that increase, who will go about making those determinations? And since it's obviously not private property, the public doesn't have to be notified. I'm just wondering about what the process would be for that.
Hank, Ryan? Me? Well, I think that it would be, that it would have to be assessed as far as. Which would be the most feasible side to widen? It, it may be that it needs two feet on both sides. It may need four feet on one side or four feet on the other. And it, it does, I think would be determined too about where exactly the, the existing asphalt lies within that right of way. So I'm sure they would have some surveying that would have to be done in order to determine. What like, like for instance, if the asphalt is, is right up against the right of way line on one side. Then, then we would have to add on the other side or it would have to be widened towards the other side.
But the authority who, the person, the individual that would be doing that is DOT or us or that's all.
Ryan, let me take a stab at this and you correct me when I go, of course. We ultimately, once this work is done, will be responsible for this asphalt and the drainage within the right of way. So obviously, we are the determining factor in, in what needs to happen and for approval for that. So we will be working with, with the developer in order to determine the best path. And do the approvals on the final plan for what goes forward.
Thank you.
Hank, Mayor, I was going to say as well, we, we have the applicant here at the meeting and also. Dicky with Stimmonn Associates, who is assisting the applicant. If we have any questions for them, they're, they're also available in the attendance of this meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Yeah, I've, I've got the la- latest traffic report or road condition report in front of me. I got burned on this sometime past, but anyhow, there's two entries for dab road. It's hard to make out exactly, but one of them's like a thousand dollars worth of repair. And the other one says dead end and it's, I think $48,000 worth of repair and round numbers. I would hope that if that were already on our list and we're talking about the dead end, that might be things that the developer might cover. Overall, if you will. I mean, th- this is our last study right here. So it, it, I just want to make that comment for me move forward since we're talking about the road and we're talking about the dead end. It's already been done.
Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm kind of of that same. That same piggybacking on, on Mr. Franklin. That if we know that the repairs are coming up and we know that it's something that we're going to be kind of looking for in budget and things of that nature. I think it would be prudent for us to consider to see what response, you know, what the developer can help out on that end.
Council members, any other questions?
It looks like Ryan wants to answer.
I just want to make a comment. So there's only, and tell me if I'm wrong, Stacy. There's only three houses. Once it comes, the road's wide enough, the, up to DOT standards and it gets down. It bobbles next down to 14 feet. There's only three homes past that. Where it gets smaller that are affected by this narrow roadway. Is that right, Stacy?
It may be three or four. It's very minimal, less than five for sure.
But the gentleman, the gentleman, I think he's built a house recently, last year. He's way up the road. That's not going to affect his. His portion of the road at all. That, that road will stay where it is, the way it is.
Yeah, the, the widening is just taking place at the end of the road, very close to where this property line starts. It wouldn't be the, the entire portion of dab road.
Thank you.
Stacy, what's, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
Looks like I have a vague recollection from sometime in the past that if, if during construction. A developer is responsible for damage to the road, that they're also responsible for any repairs that are required or necessary. Is that, is that not right?
Do know in our ordinance, it does speak to when improvements are required for a development. It is the responsibility of the developer to do those improvements. I don't know if there's a separate like public works policy about damage to the road. But, but it does say in our Unified Development Ordinance that for instance, like if. Turn lane has to be put in or, you know, right in, right, I mean, if, if some type of improvement to a road. Particularly for that development is required, that it is the responsibility of the developer to do so.
Yeah, I just remember, I can't remember exactly where this was, but sometime in the past. There was discussion about damage occurring to the roads as a result of construction traffic. And that the builder would be, developer would be responsible for any of those repairs. But that's just a recollection, you know, I'm not sure exactly when that was.
I'll look into that after Saturday.
And I think, I think you and I both have the same recollection is that. When you have a development that's phased and not everything is built at one time before they ask us to take in the road. Then there is a potential for construction vehicles to cause additional damage. If we should take in this road prior to all the construction being done, Stacy, did we not require a bond? By the developer to take care of any repairs that occur?
Say that again, Mayor.
Yeah, do we not, do we not require, if, if we. If we do not take in this road right away and let the developer build the whole development out, then that's not a problem. But if we go ahead and take in any of this road, but the continued, continued construction traffic causes damage. Do we not require a bond to deal with that damage?
Bo, do you know the answer?
The answer is, the, Mayor, yes, the, the answer is yes, within the subdivision that's being developed. With regard to, and I think this may have been Dr. Satter's question, with regard to the portion of the road that's currently existing. That will be subject to construction traffic. Normal wear and tear on the roads is not something that would be, that they would be responsible for. But if there is some kind of an unusual situation, I can envision for, you know, piece of equipment comes off of a truck and causes. Particular damage to, to the road, I think they'd be responsible for that. But they're coming up and down the road. That's just part of what happens when roads are used.
Yeah, I think what Dr. Sadler was recalling and Mike, you will recall when I mentioned roller mill court. And Sugar building the community that is, was never brought into the town, if you will. And it's still out in the county that is at the end of roller mill court. That, that is an example of where construction traffic, lots of heavy construction traffic run up and down a street road. Did a lot of damage and the town ultimately, because it was a town road, ended up having it repaired at the appropriate time. So, you know, the existing portion of dab road, as you approach Williams Road. It's, it's open, open game. And I don't think there's anything we can do except repair the road if it becomes damaged. With trucks with materials coming in.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, it says Brooke McChesney, but I imagine this is Matt McChesney. In case anyone has any questions or whether Mr. McChesney would like to speak on behalf of the project.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I think it's all been discussed pretty well.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. One was, when is the completion date considered? And will this affect the sewer system, any new sewer packages? Or how will that affect that number of new homes coming in?
But I would thank Jane and Matt, if you would like to, to shed light on this as well. But upon approval, I, I believe they would want to go ahead and get. The way the developers kind of work is they will go ahead and, and, and build the roads. They have to build roads to NC DUT standards. Those have to be kind of approved by our Public Works Director. And then they go through a final plat process with me. And so they would have to. Have a final plat approved and recorded at the register of deeds. And at that point, they can start selling lots to build homes. So after that point. The way the market goes, I, you know, we, I don't know that they could necessarily forecast how long. You know, from start to finish or from start to build out that, that they may, that might take. But your, your other question is these lots are going to be on private septic systems. They will be extending public water to these homes from a nearby source. But then e- each of these lots would be on private septic systems. There would be no plant or no sewer or anything like that.
We've been chatting for quite a while. Bo, did we close the public hearing?
This is not a public hearing, so you're good.
That's right. These are just questions and answers. Thank you.
But do keep in mind, there is, and Stacy mentioned the issue of the waiver. So if they're at such time as there is a motion. You know, you may want to get further discussed. I know you've had ample time. Um, you know, you may want to get further discuss. I know you've had ample time to, I think ample time to talk about this during previous briefings. Uh, but there is a request for a waiver of the street connectivity that's been discussed.
That's part of our resolution, is it not, Stace?
It is. Am I muted?
No, you're not.
Okay, I'm on a different screen. I was gonna read for you guys. If I can find it. Just, it is in your resolution, um, but just some requirements. They're ob- they're obviously required, um, to follow the major subdivision requirements in Chapter D, Section Four of our Unified Development Ordinance. Um, but in addition to that, um, we did talk about the street tree requirement. That requirement is, uh, one tree per forty five linear feet plus one additional tree per lot in conventional subdivisions. Um, a lot of times what we try to do is with, um, developers that have a piece of property. That is is covered with with a very good standing of hardwoods and and a very good tree canopy. We like to work with them on those types of things. Uh, we much rather would not want them to cut down. Um, a beautiful hardwood, uh, to plant some little eight foot tree back. Um, so we do try to work with them on those types of things, um, as long as it does still meet that, uh, street tree requirement for the ordinance. Um, erosion control permits will have to be obtained, uh, stormwater management, management permits would have to be re- uh, obtained if required through the town of Louisville. We ask that they, uh, show all pond streams and stream buffers will be shown on the final plat. As you can see, they are already shown on the site plan. We would, we would just ask for those to be shown on the final plat. Um, TRC comments must be remedied, which I believe those have. The interconnectivity requirements must be waived by the elected body. Um, that is a letter that was, um, submitted along with the application that is in your packet. And then the last one, dab road must be brought to minimum standards. That means NCDOT requirements of at least eighteen feet in width where needed. So those, I just want to add that for the record. Um, but yes, that is also in your resolution as far as, um. To go along with, um, if the, if the vote is to approve it. I do believe, um, we talked about not voting on that tonight due to. Technically, the property is not annexed yet and it's not rezoned yet. Um, so this is another one that we would carry through to, um, Tuesday, March sixteenth to vote on.
Yeah, Stacy, you said, um, in that, um. There somewhere about storm water management permits if required. At what point will we know if those are required? Um, and I think that's my question.
Um, upon approval, um, they would submit stormwater plans to, um, the town of Louisville. We send those to our engineer and she determines if it's low density or high density, which which this one is already anticipated to be low density. Um, because it is a large lot subdivision, because it is in the watershed. Um, because, and and so that's why, another reason they're wanting to limit the impervious surface that they have.
Thank you.
Um, I've got a question for Mr. McChesney. Will there be a homeowner association? Um, that will take on the responsibility of this, of this development?
Yes, sir, there will.
Okay, thank you. So we can theoretically hope that the homeowner association will. Uh, become engaged in terms of helping the residents understand that they're part of a greater community. And that they need to be sensitive to the houses they pass coming and going into your subdivision.
I would certainly think so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Foster?
Thank you real quickly. Uh, Stacy, clarification, when you're reading the resolution. It it sounded like that we had to provide a waiver request. It's still up to the council, the council is to determine that they want to rate, waive their request for the connectivity.
Yes, if. I think what has been done in the past, whenever those waivers, um, were approved. It would just go along with the motion, um, if if that approval or or Bo, could it be, does it need to be a separate motion to approve that waiver?
Uh, it doesn't have to be a separate motion. It it can be a single motion that. Assuming that's what happens, a motion to approve the subdivision along with the waiver, that can be done all at one time. This resolution might perhaps be modified to say that. Where is it? The inner connectivity requirements, um, are waived. Because that's what the resolution is, that they would be waived, assuming that that's what happens. But I I think, uh, Mrs. Walker didn't want to be presumptuous about the thing, so she's left it as. That it must be waived in any event that there's a motion to waive it and it passes, resolution should be modified to reflect that.
So in terms of the time for discussion, that is, any discussion that we would have would occur now about that request?
Yes, ma'am, I would say.
Right, right, that's what I heard. So just want to make sure that's, that's clear, that now's the time to discuss it and then we can move on to Tuesday. Okay.
Stacy, one quick question. We make, we make a determination about whether to waive the connectivity. Um, you probably are, are, you make the recommendation to the planning board. The planning board then makes the recommendation to us, I'm assuming. Is that how it works?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and and the criteria that we use for waiving connectivity, I know you touched on it just briefly a moment ago. But could you briefly explain to us why we would do that?
Um, in our ordinance, um, it allows developers to request that waiver. The waiver does have to be approved by the elected body. So that's why it goes up to to you guys to approve that, um, that waiver. But the basis for the waiver would be, um, environmental concerns, construction costs. Um, if the costs are going to be too great in order to require, um, a developer to make those types of connections. And in this instance, the property is surrounded on all three sides by streams. Um, and so we felt that both, uh, the construction cost and the environmental concerns would be great, um, because of that. They would have to go to, if if they were to cross those streams, they would have to go, um, through a stringent permitting process. Through the Army Corps of Engineers in order to, um, to have to do that, so.
Very good, thank you.
And for me, I have no problem with that request to waive. I just had heard counsel mention in the past, potentially, if there is something that we wanted to ask of the developer. That's all.
Council members, any other questions? Doc Sadler?
So what's the downside of not having the connectivity?
I don't know that there is a.
What's the downside?
I'd chime in there.
Yes, sir.
Is that the two current developments, if you will, that surround this property. There's not interconnectivity between them. Uh, the public safety has not been jeopardized. Due to that fact, and I don't think they would be jeopardized with lack of connectivity between. You know, the the developments now, uh, if you will.
Yeah, this, this does, thank you, Fred. You kind of jogged my memory a little bit. Um, this does have to, through TRC, this does go through the Fire Marshal's Office and they do meet, uh, the fire code requirements. Um, and so they are not over, uh, at that threshold to have to, for the fire code to actually require the connectivity. And so the the fire. I'm sorry, the the, um. The fire professionals believed that that they met, um, all the requirements that they would need to meet, um, with the plan that is before you.
About this, that also EMS would sign off on it.
EMS does not take a look at it. Um, they are not on our technical review committee. It is just the the Fire Marshal's Office, but they are looking at it from an emergency services standpoint.
I'll comment that EMS, the Fire Department and all, and for South County, as far as for South County, is all one entity. So, uh, they're run by one person now nowadays.
Ms. Hunt, did you have something?
Yes, um, I had a question for, um, the petitioner, um, in regards. I I read the letter that you guys submitted on January seventh to us, so thank you for that. Um, you mentioned in the letter that there's going to be huge costs that would make the project unfeasible if there were connections. Um, is there a kind of a dollar amount that you guys had in mind regarding when you say huge cost? Um, when you took a look at those connections?
Um, this is Matt McChesney and Luke, you're welcome to chime in too, because you probably have a better handle on exact cost. But in some, some instances of the connectivity where there's stub streets that don't go all the way to the property. And there's elevation changes of up to like forty feet difference. I don't even know, you know, technically what that connection looks like. Because there's so much would be required to bring the grades up to appropriate levels. I mean, having done creek crossings and other developments, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, this is kind of add on to to Mr. Chazzy's comments there. Um, since we have, if we were to make multiple con- uh, crossings of streams. You know, the Army Corps and from a permitting standpoint, we're only allowed to impact so many linear feet of those streams. Once you get above a hundred and fifty linear feet of impacts, you start paying mitigation fees. Uh, those mitigation fees range in basically a thousand dollars of linear foot for any, to start back at zero. And it goes all the way up to, you can go up to three hundred linear feet of impacts before you have to go into what's called a individual permit. Uh, then that's a permitting timeframe that can take anywhere between up to a year to get all those approvals done through the system. Uh, your other option then is to to build a bridge, um, and then bridges are very expensive to kind of do. So in conjunction with the stream impacts, conjunction with potential after building a bridge. The, uh, overall, uh, grading and everything you have to do to be able to get between those two points. Uh, plus roller mill, uh, the roller ridge, uh, drive, it's not really existent to this, to the property line. Uh, there's a short distance, lots of topo, so that'd be very challenging to make that connection. Same thing with Shangri-La, it's it's not paved all the way up to the property line, so it's a few hundred feet, I do believe, beyond, uh, that there is. So there's that that cost there that would have to be to get even Shangri-La up to the property. Uh, so that we're talking substantial costs to be able to make these connections.
The last bridge we built at an, at another development, which was hundreds and hundreds of homes, was around six hundred thousand dollars. And when you factor that over twenty eight homes, it's, that's obviously a large number.
Thank you very much, guys.
Council members, any additional questions?
Yeah, a- again, I just want to reiterate that the, um, connectivity. Should be suggested by our technical review committee, which includes the emergency response folks. That's the main thing of connectivity of developments and all. In this particular case, they're not recommending it. And something that we've all dealt with, uh, in the past, it was dealt with, uh, and recommended that it needed to be connected. So, uh, we we need to look for the guidance of that technical review committee each and every time.
Anything else, counsel? Very good, then this will be, uh, considered again on Tuesday, March sixteenth. And, uh, to, to remind folks what we'll be doing there. We'll be considering the annexation request, we'll be considering the rezoning request. And we'll be considering the technical review recommendation from the planning board. Okay. Thank you, council members. Uh, Stacy, you're still with us. New business.
Yes, um, tonight, um, there is a, um. There is a resolution before you, Resolution two zero two one zero one nine, um, to set the public hearing for. April eighth, twenty twenty one, uh, to have a public hearing on U D O L one six three. Um, and if you'll recall, um, this is particularly for the street tree. Item that the planning board has been diligently working on. Um, one thing that we are taking a look at it, or that we have taken a look at is, um. In our existing developments or developments that have matured street trees, those street trees are causing a hazard. Um, both to the traffic, um, and cars and that are hanging over the travel way into the road. And also a trip hazard on our sidewalks. Um, so it's, it's a safety concern, but it's also a financial burden for the town. Um, for for the maintenance of those things and when those things have to be fixed. And so we met with the Louisville Beautification Committee and, um, they were able to give us recommendations on setbacks. Um, that those trees should be planted. Um, so tonight, we are just setting that public hearing for April eighth. In order to direct Joyce and myself to, um, put that on the agenda for that meeting. But also to, um, do the proper advertisements for that public hearing that we are required to do.
And we'll have a full briefing on this at our April briefing.
Yes, that is correct.
Very good. Council members? Uh, looks like Ms. Foster made the motion, Mr. Franklin made the second. Uh, any further discussion? Very good, Ms. Smithman?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Ms. Franklin? Ms. Foster?
Hi.
Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Doc Sadler? Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. So we will have a public hearing on April eighth, um, regarding our new street tree ordinance. Thank you. Hank, you have the next one on our recycling committee. This is a change of the charter.
Um, we covered this last week. The recycling committee has been through a a good number of work with the town. Part of which is to change their name of their committee. It will be changing if if the council adopts this ordinance this evening to the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee. Go ahead and share my screen. Um, without getting into the weeds too much on this, when you guys have had this in your packet. A lot of these changes that have been worked out with this new committee changes the, um. The focus of this committee more to an environmental and sustainability committee. Instead of just, uh, the three Rs, you know, recycling, reduce, reuse and recycle. Um, anybody have any questions from reading the draft that has, that's before you this evening connected this ordinance?
Council members? Very good. The committee, the committee had a hand in writing this, is that correct?
Yes, they did.
Very good. So, Mrs. Welch, was that you?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Welch makes the motion. And Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Smithman?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
Hi.
Ms. Franklin? Ms. Foster?
Hi.
Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Doc Sadler?
Hi.
Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Hank, you have admin reports, please.
Okay. All right, I'm not able to see the events at Schallford Square, so forgive me on that when it's not in the packet. And, um, so I'll just skip on that one right now. I do know that we are closed for for Easter. Move on to manager's report. This is a reminder that bulky item pickup will begin on April nineteenth. This is going to be a big one for us at the town of Louisville. As everyone in this room or this Zoom room knows. Waste management has been unable to perform bulky item pickup on behalf of the town for the better part of the last year. Due to the state of the pandemic and its effect on their workforces. So this is going to be a big, a big event for us and we're looking forward to being able to share that with our residents. Next I will get into is that I I sent you, um, some material by email. Basically announcing some projects that are going to be restarting. We have learned that the Great Wagon Road is now under design again. With the North Carolina Department of Transportation. They are going to be engaged first in right of way, which I believe begins in twenty two. With construction following beginning in twenty four. Moving a little forward, the town, um, in fact, I finished today where I, uh, submitted. And a, a letter requesting construction authorization for the Gateway Project. This is our project at the entrance to Louisville involving our two roundabouts at the bridge. Stretching into a widening of Williams Road to our existing roundabout at, um, Schallford Road. And this, of course, for the public who may not know, we'll end up with a median planted down the mid, middle of the road. Sidewalks and street trees and, um, at least street trees in the center median. It's going to be a good project. We're going to add some curb and gutter around the, uh, the roundabouts at the highway as well. Lastly, I will bring up that. In connection with the Great Wagon Road, we had another project with CCUC. This is an old project that council and previous council had dealt with over a year ago. Because we are going to be working with the DOT on the Great Wagon Road, which is adding new road and new location. We needed to relocate the lift station that is currently behind the Oak Shopping Center. And, uh, that project has been under some design, had been stopped when the GWR was stopped, that wrote, that project has recommenced as well. And that's it for my, uh, announcements for this evening. Anybody have any questions?
Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, Hank, you mentioned on the Great, um, Wagon Road that there would be residents and. Yeah, Hank, you mentioned on the Great um Wagon Road that there would be residents and property owners would be receiving information soon. Do you have a timeline of what that means next?
Stacy, I think they said that that should happen in the next couple of months. Okay. Where that announcement would be done, maybe?
Yes, they're going to be sending out postcards between April and May of this year um, to let um folks know that that project is starting back up. Um, I think there's, they're going to send postcards to to people in that study area. I don't, I don't think that it's going to be townwide. But it would be to people um in the downtown area that they're going to be sending postcards to.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Hank?
Not so much a question, mayor, but just a a consideration. So these are, these are big projects and they've been on the docket for quite some time and they're going to be very visible and very exciting. But they're going to have some impact on folks and it's all about the downtown at at. I'm imagining that will be very helpful if I'm a resident or a an an owner of a business to understand comprehensively the plan. So as we're moving forward, I think it might be helpful if if staff could look at or management could look at how to communicate this to the public. Um, and you've got some time for that, obviously, but just proactively be ready for how we want to do that.
Yeah, I will say, although it is old, in connection with the uh schematic design of the Great Wagon Road, there were at least two public engagement seminars put on by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Right. Were well in, well attended by members of the public.
Right.
Specifically those who are wanting to be affected by the project.
Right.
Their input and guidance helped deliver the plan that that is for us in the current project.
Understood, and I I was part, I I was part of that. I remember that. What I'm talking about, though, is making sure that there is somewhere where people can go, whether it's on our website. I think, don't we have an area, Stacy, on the the um, the planning projects of projects in the queue? So somehow just having our our act together so we can kind of comprehensively say, here are the the moving parts around how we're developing the downtown, why, what's the history, et cetera. So I I think that would a lot of sense.
I know that the the D O T has an active website built for this project. I'll see what's available there and see about possible redirection. That's a, and a part of additional information that we could offer for people to visit the website looking for information.
Very good. Hank, um, also, I think with the Gateway Project, there will be quite a bit of inconvenience. So we just need to do some education around that, um, the dates and and I know when we had had bridge, bridge repairs, we had to shoot people all the way up Schallford Road uh, to cross and then come back down again. So we need to be sure we educate well on that one.
Yeah. I think what we're going to uh to see, just for everybody's benefit, is after we receive construction authorization, we will move forward with advertising for the construction of this project. And then same time, I'll be advertising for firms that will perform C E I duties. This is really construction um inspections and administration of the contract on behalf of the town. So this, along with the sewer project for the downtown, is going to have the council really jumping fast along with the involvement with the G W R.
You're good. Stacy, you have the next item?
Yes, um, we wanted to talk to you guys about how you would feel about a paid internship position in the planning department for this summer. Um, we wanted to go ahead and talk to you because those internships require four hundred hours. Um, and they count towards undergraduates who would be graduating with a planning degree. Um, and those students generally get out towards the beginning of May, um, and they would be wanting to go ahead and start those internships uh, during the month of May in order for them to to be able to fit it all in. Um, so we wanted to get some feedback about that. And also just kind of give you an idea of um some different day-to-day things that they would be doing.
Stacy, I'm going to help you out a little bit with this one, okay? All right. The idea, this was Stacy's idea. I'm going to give her credit for this one. We've had um conversation at staff level regarding um, quite frankly, the amount of of workload that exists now in the planning department and may exist in the future in the planning department. We do have concern when we talk about adding additional staff is is wanting to make sure that there is a workload that would be established and um, capable of sustaining any employee. What Stacy's idea is, and I fully support it, is to bring on a paid intern and then to assign such duties as the planning department could see, that could be expected for a junior grade planner planner within the planning department. And use this summer and the paid internship as a way to further gauge the um, the workload and the effectiveness of having an additional employee in the, it is potentially in the uh, the planning department in the future. And then also to to be able to take a look at efficiencies and if there is room for additional workload within the the planning department, how best to go about those duties? Um, anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So what I, what I heard Stacy say is that they require a minimum of four hundred hours. So that's ten weeks, forty hours a week. Uh, are you going to have forty hours worth of work per week for somebody like this? And aren't they going to have to be mentored to some extent?
That is, that is the case.
So mentoring uh an individual, what's the impact on efficiency in the department going to be?
I would, I'm going to have to let Stacy discuss that because that's going to be within her bailiwick with the planning department.
Right.
I know whenever I did my internship when I was an undergrad, um, I was able to get a lot of experience dealing with public. Um, a lot of experience shadowing uh the planner and even um just how town government runs, uh, the day-to-day aspects of those things. Um, it it's, a lot of it can be um, an intern just working on staff reports to help me out. Um, working on research for ordinance writing, um, all of those things that that I do on a day-to-day basis or even those big projects. Um, that is what they're trying to gain experience in doing. Um, even down to, you know, filing that needs to take place that that I don't have time to get to. Um, are are things that an intern can do. Um, going out and looking at different things for them to gain experience and that sort of thing. Uh, so I think it's a little bit twofold. Part, part of what they would be doing would obviously be shadowing me in order for them to gain the experience because that's the purpose of of them doing the internship. Um, to learn, to get experience. So they have a little bit of um ground covered whenever they go to start their own career. Um, but then also um, just just simple day-to-day activities. Um, writing letters that then then, you know, that I would proof. Um, things like that, that that just any um, intern would be able to do um, is is helpful.
And traditionally, when when you have interns, you want them to get the full breadth of the experience. The, this would be in, uh, part of it would be to make presentations and work with the planning board during public meetings. Also to possibly take on a project within the town, planning related, and one that could be presented to the town council. And um, I guess the same manner that they could be expected to perform once they become gainfully employed in the future in the position of a planner.
What kind of hourly wage would you be looking at?
We're thinking about uh, based on the, we have had one intern, Mr. Goover, a few years ago that was a paid intern. But we're recommending somewhere around ten to twelve dollars an hour.
Ms. Hunt.
Four hundred and eighty dollars a week.
About five grand. Fourth, four to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, twelve hours would be four hundred and eighty dollars a week. Times ten weeks.
Yep. I have a question, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, uh, do we have a job description for that position developed at this time? Um, I know that some universities and collegiate colleges like to see kind of a job description. I host interns in my business and I'm a huge um believer. I did internships when I was in college and things of that nature and even in a professional setting. So um, but I didn't know if, from a town stance, if we already had something developed for this person as far as a job description that we could take a look at.
We don't right now, but we could. I think what we're going to want to do is to end up having a budget amendment for you in April. And at that point, we would have a job description for you to consider as well. But we did want to gauge councils opinions and what they thought of this before we got too deep into it.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're asking us tonight is, do we have any objection to the concept of a paid intern for this summer?
That's correct. And it would be starting before July first. So we would want to come back to you with a budget amendment for this fiscal year to complete the last end of the fiscal year that we're currently in.
Ms. Foster.
Well, thank you, mayor. Yeah, and frankly, it's a little late to get to get interns because they're 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 ready to usually get started in, you know, May, June. So that's number one. So whatever you can get, fantastic. I'm a huge proponent of this. I mentioned to you guys last week that in twenty eighteen, the fall of twenty eighteen, the planning board met with council and put together a request. We sent it up, as as Mike says, mayor says, the food chain. And one of the strong requests was an intern, a paid intern for exactly what Stacy just delineated. So I think it is money well spent. I think it's well overdue. And I'm a hundred and fifty percent in support.
Very good. Ms. Hunt.
Um, just last comment regarding this. Um, I I definitely think that um, us looking at that, you know, you you guys bring in what, but I would also be very interested in making sure that we see that internship um documentation um, prior to.
So I don't, I wouldn't have any, any objection to it either, as long as we I guess, I'm, I'm guess I'm adding to what Ms. Hunt or bringing with what you just said. As long as we can be sure that we're going to get some benefit out of it and we can see it, it ought to be structured in such a way as that we have an outcome in mind when that person shows up. So at the end of June or July, whenever it is, it would finish up, we would be able to look back and say, oh, yeah, they accomplished all this stuff we thought they would accomplish.
So noted. Ms. Welch, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, you know, I'm just accustomed to interns not being paid, but is it the norm with other towns that they are paid?
I I was paid for my internship um, back in two thousand and one when I did my, or no, excuse me, two thousand and five, when I did my internship. Um, I think some, some places do and some places don't, um, from the research that I have gained. Um, just, just in the last week in looking at some different things, normally interns are paid uh, anywhere between seven and fifteen dollars an hour, uh, depending on what what the town is able to do.
And I'll add one little thing. I I recall that we had someone who wasn't paid before. And many times they didn't show up, they were sick, they didn't, didn't have a chance to get here. I mean, I I think enough said. Okay.
Yeah, but that's a commitment issue and I don't know that money, just my experience with employees through the years, and I've seen a lot of them. That that's, you know, Pam is not going to make them feel for work if they're not committed.
Yeah.
Ms. Hunt, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and and my, my, in my experience with it, um, I mean, I I bring them into my agency often and we have paid versus unpaid um, opportunities. But um, one of the things that I will say in the, in the university um, level right now is that they are, there are a lot of um, individuals in certain programs that are looking for unpaid opportunities because with COVID, they've not had the opportunity to get out. Like they did, you know, that they did. And so they're trying to get some unpaid through the system. Um, so that may be something to look into too, Stacy. Is a university or program that may have a bucket of interns sitting there that have to get this done. So that, and then they, they don't care if they're paid or unpaid necessarily. I mean, obviously you want to recruit for talent. Um, but um, that's something to take into consideration is programs that may have unpaid opportunity.
So let me kind of bring this to a close. We have um, no objection to moving forward with the concept of a of an internship. What we want to do is explore, does it have to be a paid internship or not a paid internship to get the caliber of person that we want to fulfill this? Uh, we also need to be sure we have a really clear uh internship program of work so that uh the experience is not only beneficial to us, but beneficial to them. Is that catch for the game? Okay, very good. Thank you, Stacy.
I'd, I'd like to add one last comment, Mike, please. And it's, and it's about the potential budget amendment that's coming to us with the hourly rate of pay. Um, I've, I I think it should be a paid position uh for the intern. Um, and I'll just say it upfront, I, I, I could not maintain my farm the way I maintain my farm without hiring some casual labor. You know? And I personally, out of my pocket, pay fifteen dollars an hour when I get people that will help me get that farm the way I want it to be. So I'm, I'm good up to there. I, I think I heard Stacy mention from seven fifty to fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, when we get back to April, just let Pam and 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 Hank bring us what the recommended amount is. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And that would be, if it was for the four hundred hours, it'd be a total of six thousand dollars.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Hank, you want to go over our approvals that we had at our briefing last week?
Yes, sir. We had three things that were uh considered and approved. We had ordinance two zero two one zero zero nine to close the Heritage Drive Regional Stormwater Plan Number One and transferring the funds to the Stormwater Capital Reserve Fund. We approved ordinance two zero two one zero one two, amending budget ordinance two zero two zero 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 one in an amount of thirty, thirty thousand dollars to increase the budget for stormwater drainage system repairs. And lastly, we approved Resolution two zero two one zero two two, confirming the approval of the thirty-nine month lease agreement for the Sharp Smart Board.
Thank you, Hank. Ladies and gentlemen, the uh, we bring these items forward. Uh, they're actions we took at our briefing meeting last week, but we want to be sure that at our regular public meeting, our regular town council meeting, that we report those out. So you know the actions that we took at that time.
Um, can I ask one quick, quick question? Pam and Joyce, did we get what we needed it um, put out for the resolution to assign to the motion that was approved last week for the copier?
That, you just read it.
Okay, that says smart board. So, oh, I'm sorry, that is that. We, we handled the smart, the copier some time ago. Thank you for that correction.
That was the smart word.
All right.
I'm glad it's just not me, Hank. I'm, I'm glad we're all having moments where we kind of.
A little foggy there.
Uh, that's, that's fine. That's okay. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we're now at the second opportunity. If you would like to ha, share your concerns, your thoughts with the council, this is our public comment section. So the information is up on the screen. You can call that number, six four six five five eight eighty-six fifty-six, or you can go to Louisville N C dot net on your computer and you can scroll down to events and click on town council meeting. And that will give you a link to our Zoom all access. Hank, do we have anybody that's still with us?
Yes, we do have Robert again. I'm going to allow him to speak.
Hey, Mr. Stonestreet, there you are.
Hello, everybody. Uh, the first thing I'd like to say is just, you know, thanks for taking the time on the issue that I had spoken about to, you know, just clearly explain to me about the connectivity on the roads, whether that was going to happen. Um, I just wanted to ask, just because now I'm at a, a piece of paper here so I can write something down. The road width in front of my home, which is currently part of the public road, I guess, uh, is sixteen. Are you saying that you're, you're extending it sixteen feet all the way down? Was that the number that I had heard?
Mr. Talbert.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you repeat that, sir?
I think the, the, the answer is it's currently fourteen and it needs to be extended to eighteen.
And it's smaller and it's narrowest air area, it's about fourteen feet wide and has to be um extended to a minimum of eighteen feet.
Okay, is, and that's where it's the only, the only other question I had, I'm sorry, is, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, the only other question that I had was, um, there was brought up a site plan um, which kind of showed the new road being developed. And is there a way that I can obtain a copy of that? Is that on public record where I can download that?
Um, if you want, you can call me tomorrow, either email me and I can, I can get you a copy of that.
Okay.
And that would be, that would be town planner? And that'll be that'll be town planner?
Not just just planner.
Just planner, okay. Planner@LewisvilleNC.net.
Mayor, if I may add, if if Mr. Robert, I've forgotten his last name. If you take a look at our website and look at the packet for tonight. That information is already up and you can see that from the packet that was discussed tonight.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
If you have difficulty finding it, just give me a call tomorrow and I'll walk you through how to get to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else, Hank? Very good. Alrighty, as we said before, written comments can be submitted to Town Clerk@LewisvilleNC.net. Council discussion, we have a couple of three things here. Ms. Hunt, we want to continue our discussion, I think, after last briefing. Where we wanted to be kind of running late and wanted to have a little more thorough discussion on the dog park.
Here we go. All right. So I think a couple of things prior to the discussion. Stacy and Hank, I think one of you guys mentioned, if I recall correctly. That there was going to be maybe an updated timeline on our parks and master plan and the comp plan. Or that we would have a little bit more clarification from that consulting firm. Do we have that information this evening?
Yes, I was just taking a look at that. Sorry, I was trying to get back to my screen. We we do have a more detailed. Schedule that's that's outlined. There will be an online survey, and and what I'm talking about is mainly the public participation. Opportunities. There's going to be an online survey that's going to be done towards the end of April through about the first half of May. There's going to be a public workshop that's going to be done in May during that time. And then there's going to be a second public workshop. In August, about the middle of August. So those will be three different opportunities that the public, all the town residents will have. To give their input on different things, park plan and comprehensive plan included in that. And then the anticipated timeline for the adoption of the. Parks and Recreation Cultural Development Master Plan update would be October of 2021. And then the comprehensive plan would be February. Of 2022.
Okay. And then before we get into any, or my direct kind of recommendation or thoughts on it. On the on that, if we were to. The earliest date as a town that we could start a dog park, if we keep it in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. You gave me the October date. In your opinion, what would be the earliest start date that we could break ground? Or have a completion or some start on a dog park, given that October timeframe?
Hank, do you want to address that or?
Again, I I hate to venture too much of a guess without getting into the plan and the process itself. What I think customarily happens, since it's a long range, you you'll have both short and long term goals. So if you have the dog park as being a short term goal. You can embark on that work as quickly as you see fit for getting that work done. That's the simplest way to say so. So after in October, we've got the plan adopted. We can move forward at whatever pace we choose to move forward.
Okay, so conceivably, November briefing session, we could make some. You know, motions or get something in motion in November. Of course, then we're running into winter months and I'm not sure how feasible a dog park is. In the winter, but so that's one of my questions. And then the other one would be. If we took it out of the Parks and Rec, out of the master plan. What's the what's the drawback of taking it out of the Parks and Rec plan and starting something now? And having something in motion and using our current committee, our Parks and Rec Committee currently to do so?
Well, let me just back up a little bit. We discussed this. We we have had a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting since we talked about this one. Last and. The chairman had a great idea for this because we did talk about. The obstacles with site location and deciding where this site is going to be. And then a dog park by itself is not going to, is probably not going to be the only amenity at a park. So it's good to have park master planning at a facility for it after you've even set X marks the spot. But one thing that the Parks and Recreation Committee did say, and this is the the great idea for them is. We will eventually need to have rules and regulations that have been adopted for the operation of the dog park itself. So even in the development stage of, you know, rules and regulations, the committee wants to go ahead and get started on that. In anticipation of a dog park in the future and not end up being where we've decided where the dog park is going to be. And we want to embark on the plan. And now we got to develop the rules and regulations for the use of the park. So they certainly think that they have some things that they they can get started with and are willing to get started with because they know that the dog park. Is a priority for the town moving forward.
So the question was, what is the drawback of us taking it out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan right now?
It could make the Parks and Recreation Master Planning a little disjointed. When we don't know where the dog park is going to be. And we're trying to master plan other amenities within the town of Louisville as a separate process.
Okay. But if we conceivably had a Parks and Rec Committee that would would. Spur dog that and be and and with the recommendations from council on location. Would it be conceivable at that point to then pull it out of the Parks and Rec plan if what I'm hearing?
Well, I do want to back up a little bit with with a facility like this. And when I talked about the expected cost of an acre size park for a dog park. I only talked about the physical, the fencing, and those types of things for the dog park itself. It does, I. We assume that we have a piece of property that we already own for the dog park in a future location, which is an unknown at this point. We also would need to to know whether or not there there is the presence of public restroom facilities, for instance. And then to be able to go through a planning process potentially on the rezoning of a future piece. To rezone it to an IP. So you have a zoning piece too. So even in October, once you pull the trigger. We've got to know where it's going to go. We've got to know how much the utility is going to end up being if there are already. Bathroom facilities at at the location. If not, what's it going to take to construct those facilities? So there is going to be a lengthy process once we know where, you know, pull the trigger on it. We can't just start putting up fence the next day.
You got to park somewhere too, right?
What's that, sir?
I have to park somewhere.
Yes, you have parking as well, and then surrounding uses to have to consider.
So what will what will the consultants consult us on as it relates to the dog park? I mean, what are they going to be providing us information on that our Parks and Rec Committee that we currently have? Can't provide direction or from our, you know, what are they going to be giving us? That we need to wait additional probably six to eight months to start the process?
I think the one thing that they'll give us is the results of the citizen engagement or the public engagement process for Parks and Recreation. How Dog Park ranked, suggestions on compatible uses. And then future locations of where a park in general, not even specifically a dog park. Would be a good idea, given the growth of the town, the direction that the town is growing geographically, for instance. Where we may be currently underserved from Parks and Recreation. We all can probably certainly agree that in the downtown area with the Shaliford Square Park. Joni Moser, Jack Warren Park, and our new community center facility right in the core area, we've got a certain amount. So does that mean that you need to push in a direction, say, north of town? Those are kinds of guidance and feedback that the Parks and Recreation Master Planning would give us. Yes, Jane?
Yes, Hank, I'm just trying to think it all through to Councilmember Hunt. Say, for example, there'd be more interest in a splash park. And that'll all come about after a survey coming up, correct? You know, where the main interests lie. In pulling something out from Parks and Rec. Does that complicate their planning process?
I can't speak for the consultants. I mean, that may not be a big deal to them. To me, it seems like it's a little. A little disjointed and possibly confusing to the process, but I can't speak to them. If you if they were sitting in front of us right now, they may have a different answer.
I think if there's a big desire for the community, that's I guess what I'd be really waiting to hear about. You know, where is that priority compared to other things we put on a wish list?
I will say, whenever they do conduct those public surveys or the public survey. And then also when we have those public workshops, they are going to be specifically geared towards. You know, the 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 comprehensive plan, the long range planning for that, for development, land use, those types of things. And then on the park side, there are going to be questions specific to parks and recreation. I know when we do our town surveys, it's kind of a general broad stroke of of a two page survey that's that's touching a lot of different things. So I do know that that the surveys and the public engagement that is done for these processes will be. A lot more specific for Parks and Rec rather than just some general questions of what people would like to see in town.
Stacy, I believe you and I talked about the potential for having the consultants at the April meeting.
Yes, they they do want.
Maybe enlightening for the council as well.
Yeah, they do want to come. Right now, we're looking at them coming to the briefing and action meeting in April. To have their first session with council. We are going to be recommending that the planning board and the Parks and Rec Committee. And any other board and committee members that want tune into that meeting. Because they're going to be introducing themselves and talking a little bit about the process. That we're that we're going to be going through. They they have already started with data collection. And that sort of thing, but they they did want to get in front of council. At the beginning of this process to to let you guys get comfortable with the process and and have, if you have any questions specifically for them. They will be available to ask that.
Okay, so is there is there any? Is there any harm of having our Parks and Rec Committee start looking at site location and things of that nature in tandem alongside? With what's being developed or what this Parks and Rec with the surveys and the and the actual adoption of the Parks and Rec? I mean, would there be?
I don't I don't think there would be any problem with it. What we do have two members of the Parks and Recreation. Committee themselves that are involved in the steering committee, Stacy?
That is correct, yes.
That's right. So they are part, we have two members of our own committee that will be a part of the steering committee for the recreation plan moving forward as well.
And council, I mean, I really wanted to just kind of have discussion around this. Anybody have any thoughts or ideas? For me, it's a matter of things getting tied up in consulting for a matter or a period of time. I know that when I came on board in early, whenever that was, a couple of years ago, we talked about it early on. As far as dog park, we looked at surveys and we kind of went through what the past surveys have stated and things of that nature. And and dog park was kicked around. And then when we did the Part F grant, that was kicked around again and and some other things like that. So I just want to ensure that we don't continue to push this through consulting, consulting, consulting. And that when we hear residents say that there's something that they have an interest in, that we are being responsive. And so that's really my intention is to, you know, but I'm one of seven, so you guys please. I think y'all understand my opinion on it.
Well, that we certainly, I mean, staff certainly understands here's you and your 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 point of view on this one. But I do think it is very promising to know that this is the first time we've looked in any real fashion. At Parks and Recreation Master Planning since 2003, I believe. So you are correct in that there has been a lot of discussion over the years about dog parks. But at this point, what is different now is that we have pulled the trigger on master planning. And we should be very excited on the potential for not only dog parks, but all recreational amenity potentials for the future moving forward.
Ms. Hunt, I share your frustration. It it seems like it just takes us a long time to do things. But I guess in the context of what I've just heard, it probably makes sense to 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 really understand. And Hank, you brought up a point, the we do need to look at investing a little north of downtown. And there there certainly are some properties there, and there are also some some wonderful residents who may want to consider a similar kind of. Generosity that Mrs. Warren has considered, and I think there are a couple, couple of people that we could approach on that. But anyway, all that in context, yes, I'm as frustrated as you that we can't get things done quicker, but let's try to do that if we can.
And I just have a fundamental question. There's no time, there's no place to do a temporary dog park? All right, I see I see Fred, Mr. Franklin. No way.
Yeah, I didn't realize you needed bathrooms at a dog park because the whole thing is a bathroom, so.
Once you put that fence up, you can't take it down other than pretty much demolish it. And you it'd be hard to take it down, relocate it somewhere else.
Ms. Foster, you have the next. Thank you, Ms. Hunt, for for that thoughtful, leading that thoughtful discussion.
Well, yes, thank you, Mayor. I am not going to take up time at all. This is less a discussion and more just a forecast, if you will. So at the retreat, there was an attempt to have some discussion about some of this. But we ran out of time because we all agreed that we only wanted to just, you know, we wanted to retreat to have boundaries time wise. So I am going to request your support in working with Hank. On developing a. A time that council would have a work session separate from. Our regular meeting and our briefing. As Hank said, strap in, we've got a lot of stuff that's coming down the pike. Stacy just told us that, you know, we're going to have the consultants here at the April meeting. And we've got a review for compliance in April. So there's a lot coming at us. And there are some things that the board and committee work group have been looking at in terms of some policies and procedures. And some direction from council that we need about just general governance kinds of things that that we're thinking about. But we don't want to get too far down the road without getting counsel, taking your pulse about some of your your preferences. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there so that when and if you get a communication saying, hey, we'd like to have a work session. That you all can understand where it's coming from. It's coming from a need to get some council direction. And help us to move forward with some policies and procedures and clarity from the governing, communication, et cetera perspective. Comments, questions?
Council members, any any thoughts?
I would say, yeah, I'm all about clarity. It's a couple of things I'm not real clear on. And, you know, to clear up and I imagine. Others will have things that come to mind, so. Yeah, I'm all for clarity, and that's kind of what I'm seeing that you may be being part of that, Jim Murray.
Yeah, just. Clarity is a good word because I'm lacking it right about now, so.
I think, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
How quickly are you wanting to do this?
In my perfect world, before the April briefing. But I need to get with my other members of the the work group to see what's what's even possible and what's on the docket.
Is this a two hour, four hour?
I would say two, max.
Yeah, Jim Murray, if you could, I'm I'm I kind of see where you're going, but if you could just kind of. Lay it out in a in a outline format, that would really be helpful for me because I can, when I can look at it and see it, I can probably get a better grasp of.
Yeah.
Asking, and that might be helpful.
Absolutely. And again, this was just to to kind of, I'm not going to see you guys again for another month, so to just say eyeball to eyeball. This is what we're thinking about. Let us flesh it out a little bit more. And so when you receive it, it 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 will make sense in terms of what we're asking and what we want to discuss.
Very good. So you'll get it to Hank and Hank will get it out to us and you can ask us what you need to have responses to.
And working with the board and committee subgroup too, so.
Can 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 we do this in your backyard and Ed will barbecue for us?
That'd be great. I love it.
I know.
And invite the dogs.
Invite the dogs, yes, that's right. Counsel, just one other quick thing. Thank you, Ms. Foster, for that. One quick thing. The. Auction of Frank Holder's. Works of art, his metal works of art over on Lasley Load, Lasley Load, Lasley Road has prompted a number of. has prompted a number of phone calls and conversations and emails about would the town like to engage in some type of public art that potentially could go in our roundabouts, making those a little more visually interesting than just streetlights or whatever it is. I wanted to get councils feel on that and, and it's something that we would refer. I'm not sure we're good for a property beautification to have their thoughts on it. I, I don't think we can make any decisions by the time that Mr. Holder has his auction on Saturday. Ryan, you got a hand up there?
You're muted.
My concern would be a safe, from a safety standpoint, putting something in the roundabout, we'd have to, you'd have to definitely talk to DOT before we went any further, but it would have to be where it would break away. If somebody was to go through the roundabout and hit that object, it couldn't, it would have to break off.
It, it would definitely require a, an encroachment agreement with the DOT. It's unknown whether and how they would look at it.
So, I hear Mayor, your concept though, Mayor, is to get some art potentially.
Yeah, essentially, I think, I think that everyone can agree that making something look prettier is a good idea, but it does have to go through that.
As, as one of our residents said to me, let's elevate the cool factor of Louisville. And I think that could be, that could be really, Hank, Orion, could you, could you guys check on it? Because I know we're putting street lamps in the middle of our traffic circles. So if you guys would just check and see what that is, and then we can come back and if, if there, if the council feels there's merit to it, let's, let's shove it over to beautification and see how we progress with it. We, we, we can hire a consultant and then they can do a study and we could probably have an answer on this maybe a year from September.
Something with this worth also considering too is since we have the GWR coming forward, it's just going to put four brand new roundabouts in the downtown. We not only have our existing roundabouts, but we have the potential for looking at additional roundabouts too.
Fabulous. Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily agree with the roundabouts might because it just creates more distraction for drivers amongst them beyond cell phones that are already distracted with. But I do believe that the town definitely needs to try to pursue preserving some of Mr. Holder's works. He's got many and varied works, but we have other appropriate places that we might display them on town property. That's not where it would interfere with the motoring traffic or have to involve the DOT or things of that nature, you know, at this point in time. But that, you know, I, I wish I was in a place that I could go to the auction sale and purchase a piece for the town. And I'm not going to be able to do that, but what I'm getting at is there, there is definitely something that needs to be preserved there if we can figure out a way to do that. And I'm, I'm very much supportive in that.
Yeah, I think we, we, we would have to decide that tonight because the, the auction's the afternoon.
I understand that, but, but it, with that being said, and this, this is going to prolong this, but can we send an agent to do bidding for us? How would that happen, Bo? And, and Pam?
Well, I mean, you could authorize someone to go on, but, and you'd have to be, you wouldn't want to choose me, for example. You want somebody with some artistic.
Well, I reckon me too. That's the reason I wouldn't be appropriate.
You, I'm the last one you'd want, but the, the council could certainly authorize someone up to an amount that would be stated. And I think we, I think the town's good for the money, so I think they could make the bid. I don't know what the terms of the auction are. But that certainly could be done.
I, I looked, I looked at the gallery, at the auction site and so forth, and, and again, I believe that we, we, we need to preserve or hopefully have somebody, you know, that would be willing to give to the town as we've been talking about. Go and make a bid on a piece that they think that they would love to see posted or placed at a place on, on town property or something. I don't know. It's, it's happening fast. I just know that if this stuff, you know, gets gone, it's gone. If, if, if I were going to be able to attend the auction myself, I'd try to bid on because I got a place for. I'll, I'll say that, but I don't know that there's a place for the two dinosaurs in, on town property.
I'm thinking, you know, a new community center would be a great place to rotate different art, you know, outside and inside. Seems like the question is, who would be the one to choose it?
The question.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the big question. And I totally agree with that. I just, you know, this opportunity's coming and it's going to go come Saturday. So I don't know how we would address it. And it's probably no way we can.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What about the walking trail and have a beautification if someone from beautification can spearhead that walking trail over at Jack Warren? If there's some, a couple pieces that could be put on that property or any of our, you know, any parks? So brainstorming. I'm not artistic at all. I'm insured.
Ms. Foster, yes, ma'am.
So, so Ms. Walker, help me with this. Couple of years ago on the planning board, two things. One, wasn't Mr. Henning selected to do something with a liaison piece artistic wise with the city of Winston-Salem? There's something I'm remembering about that.
Yeah, but he's no longer that person. Mike, what's her name? Barbara, what's Barbara's last name?
I'm not sure.
But anyway, there is a representative that is on the county's board for art that we recommended a couple of years ago.
So, okay, ask and answer. Thank you. I, I really would like to do something tonight. I would like to do whatever action we need to authorize, as Bo is suggesting, somebody to make bids or a couple of bids and just get it, get it. We know we're using, we can work on it later. Maybe we need a dinosaur to remind us we need to move fast.
At the school, right.
No, seriously, I just, I would like to know what we need to do tonight to authorize that. Let's go.
Do we have any sense of what his works are sold for in the past?
I have no idea, Kenny. Isn't there a piece of his over at the library?
It's, uh, it's in front of the library and it's, it's a piece that he donated to the county for the library.
Okay. I don't know, folks. The, the pieces are quite unusual and, you know, the, I guess we could, we could get a dinosaur in, but maybe a dinosaur's, there's, there's some like lily pads with fangs hanging on them and all kinds of it. Mr. Smitherman, please help us.
Can we just select an amount, send somebody over there and see how many pieces they can get with that amount?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes, now, there's a thought. Have we approached him if he wanted to donate a piece to the town? At least ask.
Yeah, I think it's his heirs right now who are-
Yeah, it's all heirs.
Yeah.
And I don't think any of them are local.
But folks, so, I mean, we can, we can certainly appropriate a bit of money and Pam will not make us down too hard on doing a, a budget amendment tonight. But go over and take a look at something and somebody could buy something and are we comfortable that whatever that person bought is something that we would all look at and say, gosh, that was certainly a worthy expenditure of, I mean, that, that's to me is the challenge is, is, you know, any one of us or a couple of us are only going to make that determination based on what we think is, is good public art.
I don't know how you pick a number.
Yeah, why do we need to pick a number? Bo said, Bo, didn't Bo say something about the town is good?
I think Pam can tell us why we need to pick a number.
You can't spend the money, Jane Marie, till it's in the budget.
What did you say, Bo? Then I misunderstood what you were recommending for tonight.
Well, I, I, I recommended the concept and I don't, and I, as you think about it, you generally don't want to walk into an auction with everybody knowing what your maximum is. Not the smartest way to go into an auction. I've not done many, that's why, but, uh.
I, I'd like to, to throw this out since we've got short time between now and Saturday, is that our manager, whomever, approached Myers Auction Agency, which I'm sure is directly tied with the heirs, and see if they might at the last minute want to donate a piece to the town that would be acceptable. And then work from there to work out the details. And otherwise, I don't think we're going to be able to pull it off to go bid on something and not know what we're bidding on, but maybe they would donate a piece to us even at this point in time. Because Frank was, you know, he, he did a lot for the town and, and did a lot for the, the arts world and all.
Yeah.
What are we looking at now?
This is, uh, these are three of his pieces. Appears to be dinosaur cricket and something.
That's not the dinosaur.
No. It, I know art is an eye of the beholder, but-
Okay, that's, these are the ones, yeah, these are the ones that were out in front.
Right.
But did Joe buy something? Isn't this, is this some of his work at Joe's Landscaping?
Yes.
Yeah, there is definitely, definitely some work at Joe's Landscaping that's been displayed.
Did we find out who paid for that stuff?
Ken, that's been there so long, I'm not, and Joe was good friends with Frank. They may not pay, not, may not pay the thing. That may have been done specifically for Joe. I don't know. Never asked.
All right. I, I just don't know how you arrive at a, at a dollar amount to authorize somebody to-
Well, that, that's the reason I'm recommending our approach at this point in time on such short notice is just approach the auctioneer and see if the, the heirs may be willing to donate a piece that is on that property and not sell it. And, you know, we end up with a piece that way. I mean.
I mean, they're going to lose commission.
Well, I recognize that too, but the, the auctioneer may be, there, there's a local auctioneer, it's not in our town limits, but it's, it's a local auctioneer. And they, they may be willing to help us out, you know, and, and they may not. I don't know.
And if not, we, then we lose the opportunity. So that's, that's the only downside. I mean, I, I'd go with Fred's way for sure. If we want to add to that, then so be it, but.
Well.
Who would like to be our emissary to go over and negotiate with an auctioneer in the family?
What, what time is the auction on Saturday?
Yeah.
The, the art, a lot of personal stuff starts at 10 o'clock. The artwork's going to be sold at 12.
Dr. Sadler, your name is all over this.
I'm out of town, sorry. No, I'm serious. I won't, that's why I ask you. If it was at 10 o'clock, I could make it, but if it's at noon, I can't.
Yeah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be out of town too, but you know, I'd be willing to purchase something for a certain amount. I wonder if the whole council could say privately, you know, I'd be willing to buy something that say if Mike was going to be there, trust your judgment. And then if the town wanted to reimburse me, fine, but be willing to purchase something just to have it instead of missing that entire opportunity.
Well, unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town as well this Saturday.
I, I can volunteer something. I can.
Can, can we just have the manager contact Myers Auction Company tomorrow and just ask the question?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and then ask the, you know, then call the council members and say, you know, they're not going to do it, but you said you might be willing to throw an X amount for Jane Marie to pick something out. And whether or not the council approves that, that funding or not, you, you know, you would have a piece and you'd be willing to donate it to the town.
Jane, Jane, for clarity, are you saying that if Meyer says, uh-uh, then Jane Welsh and friends would, would do a purchase and then talk to the town about?
Reimbursement.
Reimbursements or purchase after the fact?
That's right. And, and do it privately so they don't know how much I'd be willing to put in.
Now, I will, I will say this to you. There is a, there is a resident who is very much associated with Louisville and he has offered to want to purchase a piece for the town. And he, I'm certain he would be glad to go over and he has a, a, he has a, he has great intentions on, on purchasing something and giving it to the town. The question is, you know, does it look like a big bone in the front yard that? I just, you know, I'm, I'm, no, this is, this is, this is difficult rapids to negotiate.
Well, I will say Frank was electric, athletic, whatever, how he pronounced it. I mean, you know what I'm saying? He had a different style on things and it's Frank, it's his art.
Well, you're going to have different tastes and opinions on who you ask, but like the library would do, they rotate the artwork. So if it's something you really didn't like, it's not going to be there a real long time.
If it's a piece of metal, which is what Frank did, it's going to be there a really long time. It don't get rotated out. It's not like something hanging on the wall.
Folks, let me, let me come back and ask the basic question. Are we as a council committed to wanting to make sure that we get a piece of Frank Holder's art?
Absolutely.
Yes, I am.
Okay, then let me do this. Let me reach out to the individual who wants to make that purchase for us and let him use his own judgment.
Absolutely.
I agree. That's the gift. Thank you.
Now, if, if he does this, we obviously need to have a prominent place to put that artwork and not like, you know, down in the woods on a walking trail.
I agree. I agree. And, and we can discuss that later.
Right. Let's look at, let's look at.
We know what it is.
Thank you.
Well, we know what it is.
Okay, do, do we have any direction that we would like to lead that individual?
No.
Well, what do you need?
I, I have no idea what I'm asking.
Okay, how about I make a motion that, that we approve this individual to make that donation and we'll put it somewhere.
Well, I, I don't know that we need a motion, but we just, you know, be supportive of them. Go for it.
Let's do it.
Very good. If we get a big bone, we don't know what to do with it.
I don't think I saw any of those in the gallery.
Okay, I think I'll, I'll reach out and contact him and if he's interested in doing that, that would be great. And I'm sure he'll, he will, he will select something that's, that, that's tasteful and, and, uh, his, his ideas, he wanted, he thought the traffic circles would be a great place to put these kinds of things, but we'll say we, that we can't guarantee that.
Well, yeah, and it gets back to more public safety there and driver distraction and things of that nature.
You can put it in the dog park.
He'll peel every bit of paint off the bottom of it.
We're not trying to hound you, Melissa.
Could we possibly have any more to discuss on this, this evening or are we ready to have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Ms. Foster makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, give blood if you can.
There you go.
All right. And I got my first jab yesterday.
Get your vaccine, yeah.
Get your blood, get your vaccine.
And, and, and I will mention for folks that may or may not be listening at this hour of the night, the FEMA site at the Four Seasons Mall over in Greensboro was fantastic, even on opening day yesterday. You can tell it's military run. I arrived at the mall. When I went in the building, I needed to use the facilities and I had to hike to find the facilities. Got back, went to the front desk and was out of there, even with my 15-minute wait, in less than 30 minutes.
And the plug for the Piscine County Health Department, theirs was really easy to do too, so.
Well, and, and-
The box was as well. So every, everybody's got this thing down now to pretty slick process.
That's right. So, you know.
Very good.
Really well if you got to go to Greensboro.
Council members? So, no further discussion? Motion on the, motion on the floor to adjourn with a second, Mr. Smitherman?
Hi.
Very good. Ms. Walsh?
Let me see here. You think it's Bernie ready?
Bernie, oh my gosh, he's, he's over it.
I do want to say too, I apologize if I've seen a little more loopy tonight than usual. Had some minor hand surgery today and it is time for my pain medicine, pain medication. So, you know, I'm not sure what I've said or haven't said, but for calling to, to adjourn and I say approved. For calling to, to adjourn and I say approved.
Oh, very good. Mr. Franklin? Ms. Foster?
Approved.
Ms. Hunt?
I am thinking.
I'm sorry.
I just was thanking the staff for their hard work.
Absolutely. Dr. Sadler? Very good. The mayor's eye. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're still with us, we hope some of you are. Thank you so much for, I'm looking up the TV now to see if we still on. Yes, we're still on. We paid our electric bill this month, so we're still on TV. Thank you all for staying with us. It's your town government. We hope you stay engaged and involved. Those of you who participated in our public forums and our public hearings, thank you very much for sharing your opinions and thoughts with the council. It is, it's important for us to hear from you. Back, council members, we're adjourned. Thank you.